Hello, everybody, and thank you so much for your patience while we prepare to get this meeting started. If you would all join me and, no, wait, I would like to call the meeting to order at City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Dobie.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Nafolda.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbert.
Here, barely.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Perfecto. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing as Mayor Protem Nafolda will give our invocation. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I would like to thank you for this meeting today and to thank you for the gathering of all these people that are sitting in this room. Thank you for the wonderful citizens that we're about to express significant recognition, including the newest member to our police department. I'd like to thank you and to ask that you continue to bless us with your strength, your courage, and knowledge as we get ready to face the decisions that will affect our community and give us the strength in making those decisions. Amen.
Okay, at this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to Chief Claiborne.
Mayor, with your permission, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of Eric Wilson, who recently passed, who is the husband of Police Department PD Secretary Veronica Wilson. So if you could all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And Mayor may also request to have the meeting this evening adjourned in his honor.
Absolutely. All right, friends, it is presentation time, so if my colleagues would please join me up front. We have a badge picking ceremony honoring Captain Kane Gallagher, so I'm going to give the mic right back to the chief.
Well, I'm gonna have Captain Gallagher come join us up here for a moment, please. He'll stand right there. Okay, I'm gonna read you a quick bio. Captain Kane Gallagher grew up in Whittier, California, and attended La Cerna High School. He graduated from DeVry University with a degree in Electronic Computer Technology in 2002, and he drove race cars professionally for six years. After graduating from Golden West Police Academy, Captain Gallagher began his career here with the Los Alamos Police Department in January of 2006. He is now the longest-tenured Police Department employee. Throughout his career here at the Los Alamos Police Department, Kane has worked in nearly every special assignment and ancillary duty our department has to offer. As an officer, Kane has worked as a field training officer, motor officer, explorer advisor, mobile command post operator, and drug recognition expert. He's been a member of the Regional STAR Team, which stands for Serious Traffic Accident Response, Technology Committee, and a member of the West Orange County SWAT Team for over 10 years. He's also served as the president of the Police Officers Association. Kane was recognized as the Los Alamos Police Officer of the Year in 2011. Kane was promoted to the rank of corporal in 2013 and to the rank of sergeant in 2015. As a supervisor, Kane worked as a range sergeant, traffic sergeant, detective sergeant, and emergency management coordinator. He supervised the STAR Team, worked as a recruit training officer at Golden West Police Academy, and held the position of assistant team leader on the West Orange County SWAT Team's entry team. Kane has continued his education throughout his law enforcement career, obtaining his Bachelor of Arts degree in 2014, graduated from the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute in 2019, and is currently in his master's program working towards his MBA. Kane, with his wife Brooke and their three children, Trent, Shelby, and Kinsley, are all heavily involved in the Los Alamos community. They spend their weekends playing youth sports and together look forward to playing their part in what makes Los Alamos such a special place. So if I could please have his family step forward. And I believe somebody has been desugated with the honor, correct? Alrighty, now if I can have Captain Gallagher, please face me and raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kane Gallagher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties for which I am about to enter.
So the city of Los Alamos will be presenting Officer Navarro with a plaque in recognition of being awarded the 2023 Attorney General's Award for Distinguished Service in specifically related to community-oriented policing for cities of a population of 50,000 or smaller. The Attorney General's Award recognizes individual, state, local, and tribal sworn rank-and-file officers, deputies, and troopers for exceptional efforts in community policing. Officer Navarro demonstrated active engagement with the community in the area of field operations as it relates to community policing. This year, the department received, and they're talking about in DC, received nominations for almost 200 individual officers, deputies, and troopers. Nominations came from 49 states representing state, local, campus sheriffs, and other agencies. And Officer Navarro was one of the last ones standing, so join me in congratulating him for receiving this award. Now, not only is he getting the plaque from the mayor, but he also received this award here from the Attorney General himself, Merrick Garland, and this beautiful medal that was pinned on him, and he'll be able to wear that pin on his uniform for the rest of his career, so congratulations. And so, I'm not sure if you do, but is your family here this evening?
Yes.
Can they please come forwards and join us for a photo?
The mic don't really work, I'm only gonna speak into it because I know that friend over there needs it, for those that are watching live. But 50, we're 11,500, so we were competing against a lot of other people. So, sir, that is outstanding. Thank you for representing Los Alamos, so spectacular. All right. Our next presentation is to community partners in recognition of supporting the 40th Infantry Division at the Joint Forces Training Base. Y'all bear with me, I'm going to read it because there are specific things that need to be said, and when there are, I read them. The 40th Infantry was set to deploy out of the Joint Forces Training Base on Sunday, June 11th, but due to unexpected delays, the deployment turned into a two-day event. The 40th Infantry Division deployed as a Task Force Spartan headquarters. Task Force Spartan is a unique, multi-component organization made up of active Army and National Guard units rounded out by U.S. Army Reserve Support Units. Through Operation Spartan Shield, Task Force Spartan maintains a U.S. military posture in Southwest Asia sufficient to strengthen our defense relationships and build partner capacity. Units supporting OSS provide capabilities such as aviation, logistics, force protection, and information management, and facilitate theater security cooperation activities such as key leader engagements, joint exercises, conferences, symposia, and humanitarian assistance disaster response planning. The USO had two days before the event to coordinate refreshments for the officers and their families. With the partnership of our amazing businesses, they were able to provide coffee and donuts at the last minute, two days in a row, for 500 soldiers and their families. That's how Los Al gets down. Now, we have, this is major? Major. I never want to disrespect a military title, so if you are in the military and I ever say your title incorrectly, please fix me. But we have Major Stephanie Waddell in attendance, so I would like for you to come forward and if you would say a few words, that would be absolutely welcomed and glorious.
So, on behalf of General Leeny and all the soldiers in the 40th Infantry Division, we really wanted to say thank you for the love and the support the community shows to all the soldiers and the USO because, Mrs. Mayor, it was like 2,000 people that were there that weekend, and they did an amazing job, and it really was a boost to the soldiers' morale as we sent them out on this mission. So, obviously, they're not here today, but everybody really appreciates the support and the kindness we see from the community every day.
It is our pleasure. Thank you for your service. Alrighty, so we have some certificates for those that helped with this spectacular feat. 2,000, that's like some fish-in-low stuff, y'all, they gave me 500. 2,000, two days' notice, who does it better than Los Al? Nobody! All right, so from the USO, they coordinated snacks was Maureen Aaron's and Ren Travigla? Travilla? Not here?
These ones here.
Oh, and Lisa and Mike. Yeah, come on, come on. Yes, please. Yes, yes. And then the pictures, gotta take our pictures. he's from the Sons of the American Legion, he's actually out of town, but then we have Todd Landis. So if those folk would like to come on down, we have got some certificates for you as No, no, don't go nowhere. Pictures, turn over.
Did it say a couple of words?
Oh, yeah!
We at the American Legion are comprised of veterans who are currently serving veterans and their families. So part of our families is our sons. Representing our sons today is Todd. He is currently our first vice commander for the Sons Squadron 716. If it wasn't for our sons, the soldiers and the families wouldn't have had any coffee. They spent hours and hours making coffee and procuring all the donuts, so can't take the credit personally, but I was there to assist them, but the Sons spearheaded this whole operation and made it happen. So, all accolades go to our sons, but our post will accept any veteran and their family, and we are here to serve other veterans and their families as well as our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. So if you're gonna clap, you gotta commit, right? Can't be patty-caking in here. And that's just like a father. It was my child, I love that. All right, and then we've got Donut Boss, the owners could not be here, but we've got Ms. Sarah that's here to accept on their behalf, yes? Come on down. Last but not least, we have Art Garcia from Madera's, who also assisted with coffee. Come on down, Art. Come take your picture, come take your picture. Right. Go down to E. Okey-dokey. Next, we have, we're gonna move on to Presentation E. I ran out of time for D, so I guess we'll cycle back to them, yeah? Okay. We have a presentation of a proclamation to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Commission recognizing Parks Make Life Better Month, which is in July. So, if I can get Chair Alex Duran and then any other Parks and Recs commissioners that are in the building, come on down. Would you like to say a few words?
I would.
I bet you would, here you go. Oh, wait, you got a whole stage waiting. I give you two and a half minutes.
Two and a half pages, how's that?
All right.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dobie.
You got it.
I'd like to introduce my fellow commissioners here. I have Commissioner Wendy Coe, I have Commissioner Janet Gallagher, Commissioner Morgan Beck, Commissioner Caitlin Duran. Pardon me one second. I've gotten to a point in my life where I need the readers. Parks Make Life Better is spearheaded by the California Parks and Recreation Society. The goal of the campaign is to raise awareness of the benefits of parks recreation throughout California and to raise awareness the status of parks and recreation as an essential community service. The following activities will be taking place during the month of July, and we encourage the community members in celebration of Parks Make Life Better Month. We don't just have a few events going on, we have tons of events going on. We have the Pop-Up Dog Park, July 1st to August 31st at Laurel Park from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The dog park is divided into two sections, one for small dogs and one for large. We have the Flower Seed Giveaway. All month long, at the community center, patrons may stop by during business hours and pick up a packet of flower seeds to plant in their garden. We have free pickup sports. Free pickup sports will be available for adults during the month of July for basketball on Tuesdays from 8:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. We have Park Fitness Takeover, July 8th at Laurel Park from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. Los Alamos Recreation Staff will bring a fun workout for the community. Patrons must pre-register for the workout. Family-friendly, it'll be a family-friendly event, and we welcome everyone from beginners to advanced. Pop-Up Parks from July 1st over at Little Cottonwood, July 15th at Labradet, and July 22nd at Sheropris, and each Pop-Up Park will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Sunset Yoga, July 11th, 18th, and 25th at Laurel Park from 7:15 to 8:00 p.m. Recreation Staff will be offering sunset yoga for all ages. But wait, there's more. Mini Family Day with a summer concert series at Little Cottonwood Park, July 20th from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., where families will be able to participate in a variety of activities. Art Workshop, July 13th over at the Community Center from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Patrons will be welcome to come by and have family art shops to create a custom tote bag, pre-registration is required. Spikeball Tournament will also take place on July 29th at Laurel Park from 9:00 a.m. Pre-registration is required. Participants will be able to engage in fun, friendly, competitive environment, prizes will be given for the overall winners. Also, to celebrate our very own Los Alamos Recreation Community Service Professionals and the wonderful quality of life that they bring to our community, we have here today administrative team led by Emlyn Noda. We also have Alexi Anderson, Gilberto Artenegasaya, Jason Vitan, Joanna Contreras, Cassidy Given, Angel Hernandez, Samantha Kenny, Steve Kim, Alejandro Gonzalez, Lica Marie, Laurel Percivac, Jennifer Seguero, Christina Dalit, and Trinny. The best thing about this group is they don't mind when I butcher their names. On a serious note, I have been with this commission for four years. I have never seen a more dedicated, professional, well-organized group of individuals than what you're seeing right here. The information that you know about is only part of it, there's so much more that goes on behind the scenes. So from all of us on the commission to all of you, thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and your passion for our city. Because of your passion for the city, my daughter Caitlin was six when we moved to Los Alamos. She's been involved in all of the community events. Now, I'm gonna put her on the spot, I didn't tell her I was gonna do this, but she was diagnosed with autism. She didn't speak until she was six years old. Through the Parks Recreation Programs and everything else, she developed her speaking, she became passionate in her choir, as well as being in drama, to now serving on the commission. Thank you all for everything you do, you're making a huge impact in everyone's life. I yield back, Mayor.
Oh, somebody's been watching CNN. All right, so I'm gonna hand this to you, and then we are going to take a big, 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 big picture, okay? So, Ron, you're gonna have to direct.
Yes, so, Sam, you are literally hiding, you need to use a screw-over.
Get in close, right? Come on. Some of y'all can come down, right? Because they're not gonna see you behind me. Come on around. Hop on. Alrighty, I can't see you, buddy. Alright, let's see. Gilberto, you're hiding, buddy. Alright. Everyone smile. So, I would just like to point out how appropriate it is that all of the Parks and Recs people are here, because we mentioned their fearless leader. Do you know what today is? It's her birthday! So that's the real reason we had to get everybody out here, because you don't find this level of dedication. How many people would not only work on their birthday but go to a meeting that runs until, you know, the Lord sets you free? Because she's here with all of us. So what y'all are going to do is you are going to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Ms. Emlyn Noda. Are y'all ready for that?
Ready.
Okay, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Emlyn.
All right, now y'all. I saw it back there, I thought we were gonna have some cake. I thought we could have some now. I saw it earlier. All right. Okay, back to me now?
Yep.
Cool. All right, next we have a presentation by Ms. Marilyn Poe, the board president, she's gonna be writing an update regarding the Los Alamos Museum Association. Come on down, Ms. Marilyn.
Okay, many times when I get to the podium anywhere, they say, "Stand up." Well, I am standing. Just a little bit of information, you know, there's a lot of people that don't even know that we have a museum in Los Alamos, we hear that all the time. The Los Alamos is located on the Boulevard, and it is in the old Volunteer Fire Station Building. And that building, a new building was built on green for a regular fire station, and that is when the museum, that building became a museum in 1976. We have a Board of Directors, President, Vice President, Treasurer, Recording Secretary, and Corresponding Secretary. We also have trustees that are in charge of the docent program. We also have trustees that are in charge of the docent program, publicity, history, books and scrapbooks, the Hall of Fame, and the displays. Our proposed budget, we don't require a lot, but we have some, for the year of 2023, '24 is $5,732. We have income from fundraisers, programs. We have a yearly membership program. And it is, the museum is operated with no one paid. It's all volunteer staff. We're open Sundays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 2:00 to 4:00. We're available for any kind of a program from any of the schools. Many times, some of the schoolteachers will ask if they can bring their students and we always make accommodations for that. If there's any group in the community, from the chamber, any group that would like to come and visit the museum, we would be happy to give them a tour. We have approximately 2,000 guests per year and we are, just had two really good programs. It was the dedication of the clock on the water tower. Now, the water tower is at the back of the museum. You can see it from Los Alamos Boulevard all the way around. That tower was used to dry the hoses after a fire. And now, of course, when we don't have to do that, it was turned into a clock face. And that was in 1976. Well, the birds loved it. They would perch on that, on those hands until they broke off and finally it was just not usable. So that has been one of our goals. So with the help of City Manager, we were able to get a new clock face put on. And that was dedicated. And at the same day, we had a wonderful program about the Gabrieleno Indians. For many of you that don't know, they were the first inhabitants of this community and the surrounding community. So it was such a good program, we're actually talking about doing a series so that it can be broken up into smaller parts because there was so much information, it was hard to get all of the information in a two-hour period, one and a half-hour period. So that's something for you to look forward to. Our mission statement is to increase the knowledge of the Los Alamos Museum's presence in this and surrounding communities by promoting our facility, programs, and educational opportunities. Our vision is to preserve and perpetuate the cultural and historical heritage of our community. So as I said, anytime anyone would like to have a special tour, just give me a call. Our phone number is on our website and we'd be happy to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this is on the consent calendar. We yearly do a recap of what's gone on the past year and what we're looking forward to, so it is on the consent calendar. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a presentation by Police Sergeant Crowman regarding an update on e-bike safety. Come on down, Sergeant.
All right, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to kind of recap what I spoke about last time. The Los Alamos Police Department teamed up with the school district to hold e-bike safety training classes with the kids that attend Oak Middle School in McCullough. We held two classes where over 130 kids attended. The update that I can give you from here on out is after we had those classes, our patrol officers continued patrolling around the schools and educating the kids on proper laws and techniques of how to ride their e-bikes. We've also held two different days of directed enforcement where we utilized the bicycle patrol team that we have implemented and the chief actually graciously participated in it. And between those two days, we wrote approximately 40 citations to students and other e-bike riders. We've had a lot of good things from the community by doing this. We've also had some parents that were not too happy with it, but that's okay. I see that the kids are starting to learn and I'm actually excited to see that most of the ones that I've been seeing, they're wearing helmets, they're riding the right way, they're stopping at stop signs. But from here on out, we're gonna continue doing the classes every school year, so we'll hold a class at the beginning of the school year and then one after Christmas break for those kids that receive e-bikes after Christmas. And then to tell you that is tonight, Irie Linkwish. Stand up. John Crock is the new traffic sergeant, so he's gonna be heading the e-bike program and I'm gonna be assisting and helping him with it from here on out.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions I can answer?
No, just thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will be moving on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. If you plan to come up and share, please fill out a speaker card and/or fill out the sheet that is on the podium for us. This allows staff to reach out if there's any follow-up needed. I got one blue paper. Are there any other speaker cards out there in audience land? Nope. Okey-dokey. Elizabeth Hansburg, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Dobie and members of the City Council. My name is Elizabeth Hansburg and I co-founded and run the housing advocacy organization, People for Housing, Orange County. I'm actually here tonight on an un-agendized item to talk about your housing element. And the first thing that I want to say is that you are to be congratulated, your city staff and the, and the City Council on doing the hard work to get into compliance. That is really an achievement. Half the cities in Orange County still don't have a housing element that's been certified by HCD. And so the fact that you have moved from non-compliance into compliance is, is an achievement. I'm here basically to advocate for you to stay the course and follow your plan. I think recently there's been a lot of misinformation that has gotten out into the community and we just want to make sure that you understand that HCD is, is not looking kindly on housing elements that sit on a shelf and don't lead to implementation. And so I wanted to just make sure that you're, you're focused and you're listening to your expert staff, that you're paying for their professional expertise, and that you're hearing from residents who want to create opportunity for new housing. I imagine there are a lot of young people who want to stay and build their families in Los Alamos. And so new housing opportunities is one of the ways that you can do that. And then lastly, I just wanted to share some guidance information from the HCD Site Inventory Guidebook. And the reason that I'm sharing this is because I have been following the messaging and there's a, there's, people have been talking about what, something that isn't, it's a buffer of, of units. And it's been characterized as gravy. And it's not gravy, it's good planning. And so I would like to just read this really brief, it's on page 22 of the HCD Guidebook. And this is in reference to the No Net Loss Law and it says, this is HCD's guidance, it says, "To ensure that sufficient capacity exists in the housing element to accommodate the arena throughout the planning period, it is recommended that the jurisdiction create a buffer in the housing element inventory of at least 15 to 30% more capacity than is required, especially for capacity to accommodate the lower-income arena." So I just wanted to share that in the public space, for the public dialogue, to commend you for the good work that you've done and to encourage you to, to stay the course and also to recognize that the, the city went through the correct process, they followed the, they followed the recommendation of HCD. And so this isn't, this buffer that you've worked into your housing element, it's not gravy, it's good planning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on down, Mr. Randy Hill.
Hi there, I'm Randy Hill. I live at 12042 Pasao Bonita in the Highlands. And I'm here to do a plug for our neighborhood. I want to talk about the entryways to the Highlands, both on Bradbury Way and Rossmoor Way. So we do have light, light poles in the middle of our sidewalk. So that prevents bicycles, wheelchairs, and any kind of substantial stroller from having access to, from the Highlands to outside of our neighborhood. The pole, the one I looked at, and then they may all vary, I don't know, but the one I looked at, the one I do go by every day, or pretty much, is 22 inches from the wall. I brought a picture of my bike, which does not fit through there. And then the gap on the other side from the pole to the end of the curb, which I learned today, I think the sidewalk is supposed to be 48 inches. I don't think we have a 48-inch sidewalk. I think we have a 44-inch sidewalk and a 4-inch curb. But 26 inches to the edge of the curb, so it's not much larger there. And then, so what that means is, for a lot of people, they need to go into the street from Pasao Bonita to get to Seal Beach, Los Alos Boulevard, right? And that is about 40 yards on what I consider to be a fairly narrow throughway. I measured it at 21 feet. All these measurements are approximates and you should have somebody more professional do them. But for 40 years, for 40 yards to be in that street and what I feel is a fairly narrow entry with line-of-sight issues from all the walls and the very narrow sidewalks, I think it's not safe. We want kids to ride bikes. We want me to ride bikes. We want you to ride bikes. We all want more bikes to be ridden, but we do have an issue with bike, the ability to ride bikes in our city. It's just not very conducive. Anyone who rides a bike knows that. But I, I'm hoping that we can do something about this one. Standard wheelchair width is 28 inches, so that would not get past either side of that pole. And their ADA requirements are 32 inches for a wheelchair to get through something and a ramp would be 36. Also, especially that sidewalk there is in disrepair. It's lifted, it's got slopes, it's cracked. The whole, to me, the whole entry is relatively, let's just say, user-unfriendly. So I would like you to consider that. And Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff, I appreciate you all very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so you do not have to have a blue card filled out. You just have to sign in for me, even at the podium. Do we have anyone else that would like to come up and share?
Hi, my name is Helen. I've been coming to several of these meetings.
Helen, in the mic, please, so we can catch you.
Hi, my name is Helen. I've been, can I take this out by chance?
Absolutely. Did you sign in, though?
Okay.
Okay. It's my only rule. Thank you, Ms. Helen.
Okay, my name is Helen. I've been coming to these meetings since October when I learned mysteriously from our local newspaper about this high-density, low-income housing that supposedly was mandated. Not knowing what was going on, I attended to find out only a few people attended in the audience, saying, "Whoa, this is huge. Why do people not know about this?" Well, the presentation had a gentleman by the name of Les Johnson leading it, who also had his assistant, that they were talking about the plans. Come to find out, Les Johnson was at one time the City Manager for Los Alamos. The cry was conflict of interest. The concern was, on the other side here, no, it's fine. Well, apparently, you will see as time goes on that there's a lot of conflict of interest and there's a lot of questioning things behind the scenes that may not be necessarily on the top of, on the table and are questionable. But that's one reason I'm here. The other reason I'm here is because I'm a concerned citizen, because I love the city, because we all traverse the different streets, and because I'm an accountant. I, you know, it's that time of year when financials are come, come out for the auditors. So I took the time on a lovely evening to read your financials, the 21, the 21, 22, ending June 30th, financials. The majority of these financials are written by your fiscal and financial director, Craig, and by the City Manager, Jett Simmons. There's not a lot of auditing going on in these. I was baffled to find the number of errors, not small errors, huge errors, that has me wondering, were these a mistake? Were these an oversight? Were these intentional? Were these hopeful that no accountant like myself would be reading them? Well, come to find out, I read them. Now I have to ask you, I'm gonna raise a question. We have two very newsworthy cities, local, close by to Los Alamos. One is the city of Cypress. The other is the city of Huntington Beach. Bear with me, I'm going somewhere with this. So with Cypress, or with both of them, they're completely different in their focus and concern for the city and for this housing element. City of Cypress, apparently, word is out, articles are written, they're non-concerning of their residents, they're non-transparent. Many have even said they're corrupt and it's a self-power grab. And they're enjoying their elected officials but not doing their job. The city of Huntington Beach, on the other hand, as you know, is being continuously astutely applauded for the work that they're doing on standing up for the people, standing up for the city, working to protect their city. This mandate that is going on is not necessarily all true as what's being said. There's over 800,000 people that left the state of California 2,000, two years ago. Hundreds of thousands are continuing to leave. You tell me, where is the housing issue? But interesting enough, the city of Los Alamos has increased the number above and beyond what was needed. Yes, there is an article out about gravy. It is factual. You want some facts? Go to a wonderful website called POCnow.org. P-O-C, Protect Our Committee now. It's all factual information taken from real documents, no opinions. I leave that to you. But moving on to my near and dear subject, accounting. So when looking at this, I noticed that, at 121 pages, and please know, if anybody gets bored and wants some good reading, I'm more than happy to share this. I wish you can also get it online. So basically, I kind of stumbled across a few things that really baffled me. For example, the city has this huge pension debt, liability of approximately $22 million. But somehow, the numbers aren't totally reflecting that. One year they did, then all of a sudden it went down a little over $7 million. I'm thinking, huh, these people are responsible. They're paying down their debt. But are they paying down their debt? Well, apparently not. They did a projection. No money was paid down, so they're working with the numbers. At the same time, just to let you know, they also have a three-point something million debt.
I can give you 30 seconds, Fran.
Okay, the other thing that's important for the people to know is the revenue. They have a franchise income tax that was overstated by $9 million on these financials. That's not pennies. So $9 million, who's watching these books? Who's auditing these books? At the same time, City Council, I encourage you, get an independent auditor out here that will look for fraud, if there is fraud. I'm not saying there's fraud, but there's a lot of questions.
Thank you very much.
And at the same time...
Thank you very much.
...the two councilpeople that are working with a backbone.
Thank you.
A lot of work. Do you have the right people in office? You have to decide.
Thank you very much. All right. I told y'all, if you're gonna clap, clap. Don't patty-cake now. There you go. Oh, okay. Oh no, he's just grabbing her pen, being a gentleman.
There is, there is some paper up here. Did you have a sign-in?
Did you have scum with my paper, Fran? Yeah, let's get that back. We're discovering fraud. I'm just playing, that was a perfect, it was a perfect placement, though. All right, here we go.
But thank you.
Sign in for me.
I will. I don't know, maybe you might want to print. I don't know, there's a little squiggle here.
It's cool.
But my name is Maggie and I am a resident of Los Alamos. And I just showed up today because I want to remind... And I just showed up today because I want to remind you that you guys are doing a phenomenal job. I know, because I read the newspaper, too, that there are a lot of allegations. I don't know if any of it is true. I'm not digging into it. But I do know that you guys are always thinking about your residents, and I appreciate that very much about the three of you. I'm a little disappointed about the two new members of the City Council, but that's okay, they're learning. So the housing element, you know, I urge you to continue to represent the residents of the city. And I'm not sure if the first speaker lives in Los Alamos, but it is a very crowded town without the housing element. We, all of us who live here, we experience it on a daily basis. Anyone's beef or complaint with the housing element that you're all implementing to the best of your ability is not your doing. That's Sacramento. And if anybody wants to pursue it and change it, I would love it, personally. I would love to see changes in the housing element requirements, because we're going to be so severely impacted with the County of Orange here in Rossmore, and then what's being built in Seal Beach. So we're all impacted. And all I can ask you to do is just continue to, you know, look at what's needed for our residents to mitigate the impact to these streets here. And to always remember, when you're standing, when you're sitting there and people come up and say things, whether they're true or not, I don't know. I just want you to know, from a resident perspective, you're doing a great job. And I want to thank you for standing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All you folks. My name is Tom Elmanzen, and I've lived in La Salle for about 25 years. Son graduated from La Salle, played football, baseball, was a great school, good teachers, great city, that's why I had him go to school here. With this housing element that's coming up, and this, per the Sacramento, they're saying we've got to have 700 and some odd units for the city added in. That's what they asked with your plans that you submitted. And we all want more housing for, to make it fair for everybody, and I'm all with that. But if you want to crowd areas like the Lamson Project, put in triple the amount of homes on the same amount of property that Parkwood, where I live, there's 103 units there, same-sized lot, that you want to put 400, I've heard 400, 500, 300, with no parking, taking, getting rid of parks, jamming the schools up, you're changing the city. I mean, we have to, La Salle is a city that was, had a classy taste to it, and it always had a good name to it. And it wasn't, it's getting cityfied. You're, if you crowd the city here with too many people, too many cars, not enough parking, you're going to, you're going to put businesses out of, you want to get rid of some businesses and squeeze other units in. I think you need to take a better look at this, because what you're going to do is change La Salle into something that isn't now anymore, you know, now. And these, these allegations that the lady's talking about, you know, you want to be trusted by your, by your citizens, by your people that live here. I'm on boards. And if you don't have trust, I tell you what, you can say all you want, but it's not a good thing. And like, somebody got offended here because somebody said something about, to her family or whatever. And I'm sorry to hear that, because that's, it shouldn't be that way, but that's what's happening. The trust is going out the window, people are starting to believe what they want to believe, money, the budget doesn't make sense, you've been audited, I've heard two different audits, they can't make the ends meet, you know? Now you want credit cards for people, and they can, without, you know, for your folks to spend, and spend money and stuff. A lot of stuff is just not real clear what the city wants to do. And you don't want to get too big for your riches here, you keep it under control, and it looks, seems like the city wants to get big fast. And for the reasons that I don't like. It's not for, it's not for the betterment of the people that live here. It's not. It's for the dollar sign. Get those students in the school, get more kids in there, get more units in here. 700, let's have 1,200. Let's have 1,500, you know? I'm just talking from the people that live here. The majority of people don't like it, but you have to do what you got to do, and I understand that. So when you're thinking about it, you know, just, don't put the dollar sign first, you know? You want to make things better for a reason, and don't make it that's, it's going to help your budget, or you got, you're in debt on a pension thing, and, and that kind of stuff. So anyways, continue with your work. I commend you for, you know, volunteering your time, and, because you take a lot of heat, but you, but that comes with the turf, so, you know? But we want, I just want to make sure that, you know, we want to trust you. I want to trust you. I mean, we all want to trust you. And if you, if you're open with what you're doing, and what's your, you know, and everything, maybe that'll all work it out. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and close oral communications. And then we will move on to Item 7, which is updates from the mayor. I have a few things, but I would like to, first, there's just two things I would like to share with everybody, if you'll indulge me. First is, if you bring something to us to share, and I realize there's a lot of passion around a lot of these issues, please do some unbiased research. Look a couple different places. Don't just go to one source and bring what appears to be a fact, because there is a stark difference between what is fact and what is truth. Facts change. Truth does not. I would like to believe that as a collective, the five of us look for what is true, not necessarily what is a fact, because like I said, those things change. Second, if you have something to say to any of us directly, whether you are pleased with us or not, I would ask, and you don't have to do this, this is just a kindness to me, reach out to us directly. Because I can almost assure you, we would take it much differently, and maybe more the way that you would like us to, if it were more of a heartfelt, hey, I've got a question about this, can I talk to you about it, than a chastisement in open court. Okay? Now, fireworks safety tips. I've got five of them, y'all ready? First is make sure fireworks are legal, and purchase them from a reliable vendor, such as the two locations, DeVita and the Vons Parking Lot in the city, that benefit the Los Alamos Community Foundation. Number two, never allow children to ignite fireworks, and always have adult supervision with them. Three, keep a bucket of water or a garden hose handy and nearby. Four, light the fireworks outdoors in a clear and safe area. Five, and this might be a complicated one, but only light one at a time. We would like to celebrate the successful return to the Los Alamos Aquatics Program at La Salle High School in partnership with the Los Alamos Unified School District. Y'all, this is a big deal. We have been without an aquatics program for a very long time, and our city works tirelessly, I don't know whose word that is, but somebody uses it all the time, tirelessly to make sure that we got an aquatics program back, which is critical, because our little people need to learn how to swim. Drowning in young people is, it can be avoided, okay? So we have approximately 240 enrolled in swim lessons, and we're offering adult lap swim at just $4 per visit. Can I assume if they bring a five, the dollars a tip? Okay. You can visit on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and then there's free recreation swim for all ages on Fridays with a reservation on the city's website. So if you spent your $4 at Starbucks, but you still want to come and swim, make a reservation on the city's website, and you can come and work off that Starbucks gratis, okay? Next, we will move on to updates from city staff.
Madam Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd actually just like Director Noda to give an update on the events that we have forthcoming for the 4th, I'm sorry, the 3rd of July.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the City Council. We would like to invite the community to the Universal Waste Systems 3rd of July event at the Joint Forces Training Base hosted by the cities of Los Alamos and Seal Beach. Monday, July 3rd, 4 o'clock, gates open, 8:45, gates close. The fireworks show begins approximately at 9 o'clock, and we have a food court, vendor booths, musical entertainment, beer garden, family fun zone, and we get approximately 8,000 attendees at this event. We encourage you to bring lawn chairs. There are no reservations required, and you must present your ID at the gate, and no walk-ups are allowed. And you can find more information on the city's website at cityoflosalamos.org. And then I'd like to just mention quickly the Memorial Care, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Summer Concert Series. We have one this Thursday, we started last week, and this is also available on the city's website and social media. We've got dates all throughout June, July, and August, starting on Pine Street, and moving over to Little Cottonwood Park and Orville Lewis Park. Thank you.
If I can have Chief Clayborne provide an update as well?
Yes, sir, thank you. We have one event that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, which is the Law Enforcement Torch Run, which is raising funds for the Special Olympics, which will be held on Wednesday, June 28th. At approximately 3:00 PM, we will be running throughout the city, and that run will end at Mama's Restaurant, where we will be hosting a Tipicop event, which will raise money for Special Olympics. And once again, the Law Enforcement Torch Run will be on Wednesday, June 28th, starting at 3:00 PM. The run will last under an hour, and then we'll be heading to Mama's, where we'll have a display for the public to view, and we will be assisting servers inside the restaurant for the Tipicop event.
And lastly, Mayor, just because I think it'll add some clarification to the comments that were made today, I'd actually like Nicole Chris, who is with Terra Nova, to provide a quick overview of some of the comments that were made today, and maybe it can provide some clarification.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name's Nicole Chris. I'm with Terra Nova Planning, and we help the city with the housing element. There, there are statements that have been made that are incorrect, and I just wanted to point you to the facts relating to the housing element. We have, we did not plan for or assign an additional 527 units. Thank you. The, that page that's up on the screen now is, is from the housing element, although it is, it needs to be a little smaller, so we see the entire table, if we can do that. The table that's been referred to in, in social media and the press does show 1,295 units, because that is the total number of units that could be built on the sites that are in this table. We, on the contrary, planned for a total of 817 units, which is 48 units more than the RENA requires, so that the city has a little bit of flexibility if a project doesn't come in as shown on these, on, in this table. I'd also like to point out that the RENA is for all income levels. And our RENA of 769 is, includes 311 above moderate income units, which are market units for people who make more than 120% of the median income. And we have 145 units assigned for moderate income households, which are units that are for households that make 80 to 120% of the median income. The total of 769 is what was assigned to us by the Southern California Association of Governments. It, it is a number that is calculated every eight years during the housing cycle, and it is considerably higher this cycle for all jurisdictions than it was for last cycle. The city is responsible for facilitating that development, not building it. And, and as projects come forward, the city has the ability to look at the housing element and its needs, and determine whether or not a project meets its needs for RENA. I can answer any questions that you have, but I did want to clarify that the, the data that has been presented in, in social media and in the press is not correct.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all I have in terms of updates for today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification. We will move on to the warrants. Can I get a motion for the warrants? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Doby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Nofolda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion, unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Anyone have anything that they would like to pull?
I do.
Okay, and do you just need a staff report, or you just need to ask questions for clarification?
I'd like a staff report on 10B, as in boy. E is in Edward. F as in Frank. G is in girl. I is in Indian. J is in John. L is in Larry.
All right. So we will pull them in order. So if I, that's just about, do I want to try to move the rest of it?
I would recommend you move the rest of the consent calendar, and then take them item by item.
All righty. Can I get a motion to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so first up is 10B. And Chad, I'm going to just call them out, and you assign them to whomever.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to ask Director Noda to speak on this one. This is for the, Item B is for the replacement of a community, of a divider within the community room, in order to allow us to split that room into multiple spaces, and largely just to allow for us to provide a better experience for the people that are coming to use our spaces. Also, it'll allow us to program in multiple spaces as opposed to using just one. The current divider is inoperable at this point, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I missed anything.
No, it, like the city manager Simmons said, it is inoperable, it is 40 years old. You know, the community center is host to a lot of programs and events, and thousands of patrons every year. Because of the, you know, need for office space, we had to take away one of the activity rooms to convert into office space, so the need to have additional swing space or activity rooms. So the way the community center is split up is they have a large activity room, and so then, if this door was operable, we could shut the door and make that large room into two medium-sized rooms to host two different programs or events at that time. I'm here for any questions, if I missed anything.
Yeah, one of the things that stood out to me is typically room dividers, there, there's a track on the ceiling, or they're in some way suspended. I know that in March, we, we passed some emergency funding to pull the old, you know, dilapidated roof off and put a new roof on. How will the construction on the new roof affect the ceiling that this will be attached to?
So the way the community center is constructed here is, you have the... So the way the community center is constructed here is you have the outside roof material, then you have a ceiling, and then there's trusses that are underneath, and so, and then there's a beam or a header that's from that roof, from the trussing, that houses the track that pulls the divider in. So when we basically do the roofing project, it will not affect, if we replace this before the roof project, it won't, you know, damage or affect the new divider wall being put in.
I noticed also on, it was item 2, page 46 of the agenda, it said that it has to have a minimum sound transmission rating of STC 50. What is that and why is that important for that, for that space?
So, you know, the way the Recreation Community Services Department allocates or utilizes a room, you know, you might have at one time a yoga class on one side of the room, and at the same time, you might have a guitar class on the other side. So with the soundproof rating, it dampens the sound tremendously where the yoga class won't be as affected as if we just use a regular non-dampening type material.
What would that room be, is it more expensive to have the sound dampening material?
It is more expensive, yes.
Why not go with something a little bit cheaper?
Again, you know, when we do our study and we brought the vendor in, you know, we provided them a schedule of, you know, like we could have day camp on one side and you could have another class on the other side. And again, they said that we would like to attenuate or kind of do some soundproofing, so one room can operate kind of independently versus the other room. And so that's their recommendation, recommendation is to utilize this type of material to get this type of soundproofing.
Okay. When I was reading it, I was curious because I agree, you know, that this kind of a space does need some, some sound dampening, which is why I thought it was interesting why the city would want to overrule the Airport Land Use Commission's reports that said that new houses built near the Joint Training, Joint Forces Training Base would not need to be built with STC rated building materials. So if we're gonna put in the, you know, the right sound dampening materials in our community center, I would think that we would also want that done in future residents' housing.
This is one of those where we need to actually stick to what we're dealing with tonight, I believe, right? So did you have any more questions specifically about what's in B, or can we move on to E?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, let's go to E, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, just Madam Clerk, are we going to, we'll answer things all as one, and then?
We can vote on them one at a time, or you can move the balance?
Oh.
At the mayor's pleasure.
Yeah, it's up to you. It might be cleaner for the minutes if we did it one at a time.
All right. So, can I get a motion and a second for item B?
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Spectacular. Now, E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is to execute an amendment for consulting services, which actually looks at our MPDS and how exactly we actually put together a program efficiency assessment. It is a requirement that we contract out. Again, I'll pass to Director Noda if there's any specific questions.
Did you have a specific question?
You know, I don't have a question on this. I've identified a couple errors in this one. On page 90, it says that this contract is for two years, and page 92, it gives a different term. So within this one, there's, there's multiple references to either a two-year contract or a four-year contract, so.
Yeah, I can answer that question. I think the staff report is indicating that there will be a two-year extension at this point. What you're reading when you look at the actual text of Amendment 1, it's amending and restating the language that's included in the underlying agreement. So although we're extending the term out until 2025, it's written retroactively to account for the fact that the agreement has now been running for a total of four years on this term, or will until that future point in time.
How do you interpret this? This is page 92. This shall continue in full force and effect for a period of four years ending June 21st, 2025, unless extended by a mutual written agreement of the parties for a maximum of one additional two-year contract extension.
So I interpret that to mean that the contract will run for a period of four years until June 21st, 2025, unless we return to council and ask for another extension of the agreement for one additional two-year term.
So are we voting on two years or four years?
Right now, the approval would be to extend the term until June 21st, 2025.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that additional one, the one additional two-year contract extension language is just carrying forward language in the underlying agreement that provided for the ability to extend the agreement at a future date. So the only way to exercise that option for one additional two-year term after the 2025 expiration date would be to come back to the city council for authorization to exercise that option.
Thank you.
All right. Clear on E? Councilmember Hibbert?
Yes, thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. F?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a amendment to the contract that we have with Cross Town Electrical and Data. They are the company that provides service to our, our electrical infrastructure and maintaining the signalized traffic intersections, which we have 21 of in the city. There's two components to this. One is the maintenance that we provide, but then also the emergency call-out services that we need sometimes when a signal goes down due to whether someone hitting a pole, such like that. And so this is just an extension of the contract that's already in place. And again, I'll turn it to Dr., I'm sorry, not doctor. Mr. Noda, in the event that there are further questions.
Got an upgrade.
This is you, Councilmember Hibbert?
I have a similar question. On page 143, it says this is for a one-year contract extension ending June 21st, 2024. On page 188, it says the contract will continue for three years.
Yeah, so, so again, it's, I understand it's clunky, but it's restating the language from the body of the original PSA that's included, so that if you were to refer back to that paragraph, we have an effective date on the agreement that's three years prior. So we're saying that it will run for a period of three years until this new expiration date, which is an extension.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second for F?
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
G?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is actually a submittal of an annual documentation that's required in order for the city to receive Measure M2 funds. I'll ask, it's in my head, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Noda, if, if there's particular questions that need to be restated. But each year, it requires different documents be put forward for the council to approve and then are submitted to the county, so that we're able to actually access these funds.
Were there specific questions, Councilmember Hibbert?
I do. My first question is on page 192, it says the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget...is, are we referring to that, that year, or are we referring to, is that a typo? Page 192 of the agenda.
I believe that's a typo. I apologize. That's for fiscal year 2223.
Do we just correct that after?
As it's a clerical mistake, the city clerk has the ability to go in and change any of these documents that are not substantive.
Thank you. Page 193, this is an Excel spreadsheet showing, you know, projects and the corresponding fund sources. The street marking, striping shows the funding source is Measure M with an $85,000 expenditure, but when I compare that to page 773, the list of capital improvements, it shows the same item with a funding source of the gas tax.
Ultimately, the way we allocate the Measure M funds is we utilize Measure M for the street pavement marking. So if the other page that you referred to states that it's gas tax, and it's, it's an error as well.
I'd like to get that corrected as well. Do you see what I'm seeing, or am I mistaken?
Can you repeat the page number again of the gas tax?
Sure. Okay, so 193, that's what I was looking at regarding this particular item.
Correct.
But on page 773, that Excel spreadsheet with the list of all the capital improvements, it shows a different funding source.
Yes, it's noted. We'll make that change, ma'am.
Thank you. Page 195, this is the same Excel spreadsheet showing various projects with the funding sources. Labradet Park Play Structure shows a $400,000 expenditure coming out of the general fund, but on a different page, it's listed as $700,000 coming out of the general fund. That's a difference of $300,000.
So, the 300,000 is coming from CDBG funding. That's the difference right there. The rest of it is coming from general fund.
In our report, it's, it's not stating that. It's stating that two different amounts are coming out of the general fund.
Okay. Let me get to the page. There's 190?
195.
Sorry, it takes me a while to get there. You're referring to Sterns Park, correct?
Labradet Park.
Or Labradet?
It reads Labradet Park Play Structure.
Yeah, so Labradet Park Play Structure, again, I'm just reading what I see. CDBG at 300, general fund at 400. So it's showing the total of 700.
Can you refer to page 773 for me?
Okay, I see that. Yes, 773.
For that same, for that same project, what dollar amount do you show?
700,000. For Labradet Park project?
Yes.
Correct. So... So the spreadsheet is inaccurately saying, so again, what the CIP list stated is 300 is from CDBG and 400 from general fund. So in her, in terms of this park project right here, it should have said general fund and CDBG funding.
Okay, I'm getting a little concerned, because so far, that's the third error.
Correct.
Okay. There's more. I mean, I'll just, I'm just gonna continue. There's one more to get, to get it on the record, so that we can identify these before, before we vote. But I'm, I wanted to bring this up because I'm concerned that we're, the funding sources are, in our own report, were conflicted.
Correct. Again, we can take a look at it and do a better with a fine-tooth comb, but I just want to state that the CIP, the list that you see there, the spreadsheet, that's just a...
On which page?
It's the one that has all the different colors and stuff. It's like page, I gotta go back to it. Sorry, it's just, as you are aware, it's 789 pages. I gotta go back and forth. But, so the CIP list here, that is on, that is part of the report for item 10G, that's just a, you know, that's not the formal list, right? It's just kind of like a draft list. The formal list is what's in the draft document for the budget. So we can go up there and, like I said, I will take a closer look at it and I'll make the corrections as noted.
It's really concerning to me, because within our own document, we have multiple conflicts. And you're, and you're, you know, you're wanting us to vote on this. I've got, I've got three errors so far of funding sources contradicting each other in different, different amounts. Let me get the last one on, on the record. Page 195, this is in regards to Sterns Park. This shows a funding source as the general fund with a $300,000 expenditure. And again, page 773 has a conflicting funding source. It shows it's coming out of Measure Y.
So the reason why here is if you go up all the way to the top of the header, it's for fiscal year 2324, right? Sterns Park was initiated in fiscal year 2223. So we had CDBG funding plus the allocated money that council did, and so in this coming fiscal year in 2324, we're asking for an additional 300,000.
Makes sense. Okay, I appreciate that one. Thank you.
Ron, if I can ask just a clarifying question with regards to the Measure M funding that's being requested. Do all these numbers tie directly to our current budget, or are these numbers that will be provided once this has been submitted to the county and they do the annual allocation?
Nothing is submitted to the county or any organization until council approves the budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so a motion and a second for I.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we're on G.
G. Oh, forgive my whole life. So run that back. A motion and a second on G.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we go to I.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure, just for clarification, there was no questions on H, correct?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. I is a notice of completion for various street improvements throughout the city. This was part of the rehab projects that we've been doing throughout the city. This is to provide a notice of completion and to release the retention for the contractors. There obviously is a list of streets that are provided there. If there are any specific questions, again, I'll be turning it over to Mr. Noda.
That gives it right back to you.
I'm the one with the questions. Okay. I read this packet, you guys. Okay, I have a statement. I've read, I've received several complaints from residents in the Highlands citing problems with poor quality with asphalt work and concrete work the city had, had done. I notified the city of the problems and the residents' concerns and provided photos and videos of what appears to be shoddy work. I've been communicating with Development Services Department regarding these problems, but so far, they, they haven't been fixed, and some additional time is needed. A yes vote on this would mean that the asphalt and the concrete problems in the Highlands would not be addressed and certainly not fixed. The Highlands residents did what they should have done. They contacted their elected representative and brought the problem to my attention. Page 272 of the packet says, "Work on this project is now complete and found acceptable by the city engineer. Staff recommends acceptance of the work in conjunction with the processing of the notice of completion, final report, and release of the retention as prescribed by the Public Contracts Code." Since this issue is still pending in, in the Highlands, I'd like to ask that this item either be moved to a later date, or, you know, for my colleagues to vote no, to give some additional time for myself, staff, and RJ Noble, to, the vendor, to, to work out these issues. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I will say that the work that has been looked at by the city engineer and signed off, I know that staff has been in contact with Councilmember Irred about going out to the site and walking to be able to look at what the exact problems are out there. And again, we would continue to offer to do that and look at any other work that needs to be done, but I will stress that these streets projects are designed in order to accomplish certain goals. Some strip projects are designed in order to address runoff. Some are designed in order to address puddles. Some are addressed, are designed in order to address just an overall overlay. It would be important to know the size and scope of the issues before we're able to address them further and what exactly the original scope of project was. and what exactly the original scope of project was. That being said, I know that the director has offered to go out and walk the site with the council member.
I'd like to add that when we do a street project or a lot of projects, that we have a warranty, all right? And so, just because we're doing a notice of completion doesn't mean that if we go out there and like City Manager Simmons says, and we identify, we walk the neighborhood and we identify some problematic area, it means that they can come back. They will come back and fix the problem. The reason why I would like to have this project do an NOC or notice of completion is so we could start the next phase or round two of the street improvement project. Again, we'd like to take this one off the books so we could begin the second phase of the street improvement project. But again, just the council voting notice of completion does not mean that the RJ Noble will not come back to fix any issues that we identified.
May I have a point of privilege, please? Can someone please close that door? Thank you.
I'll go ahead and move the item for approval.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. We'll move on to J.
Madam Mayor, this is a... I'm sorry. Doing this by computer is a little difficult from time to time. I envy my colleague here. This is largely a project to grind and overlay Bloomfield Street from Catella Avenue to Florista as part of our ongoing pavement management plan. The project will also include ADA ramps. And this is actually a bid to put out authorization from the council to put this project out to bid and then be able to return back with what exactly those bids are, award a contract, and then to start construction. And again, I'll ask if any specific questions Mr. Noda can answer.
I've identified several errors in this one as well. I'll start at the top. Page 276 states, "This project will repair pavement that is experiencing pavement." What does that mean?
I believe it's an error.
We can fix all these?
Again, anything that is clerical in nature that does not substantially change the nature of the report, we can correct.
Okay. Next one is page 283. It's in the notice to bidders section. Number three states, "Bids must be received by 11:00 a.m. on the 15th day of November 2021."
Again, I believe that to be a typo, which can be corrected.
Page 291 states, quote, "Public notice is hereby given that the city of Los Alamos as agency invites sealed bids for the above-stated project and will receive such bids up to the hour of 11:00 a.m. on the 6th day of July 2022." It continues, "The bids will be publicly opened and read at 11:00 a.m. on the 6th day of July 2022."
And councilmember, I think I catch your meaning here is that there are dates that need to be corrected. And obviously, a lot of this is auto-filled, but we can go back and make sure that these are all correctly dated before they're posted.
Okay, that's my concern since we're going to be sending this. I understand the project. I think it's a great project. It's necessary.
Can I add some clarifying that sometimes the bids here, it's all draft. So, we haven't gotten down to the... We have to work with the city clerk and we have to do proper noticing. So, that's why, as you can see there, it's highlighted. So, it's highlighted means that it's in draft form. So, that means we haven't settled on the exact date for the bid opening yet.
Why would the dates not be correct for the draft?
Again, because let's say, just a hypothetical situation, we put a date there, right? And let's say, for some reason, council didn't approve the RFP. We already paid for the newspaper advertising. We already put it in, you know, all that. It's finalized. So, that's why we put in a draft date. So, then, once we get approval tonight, we go back and we work with the newspapers. We work with our bidding outlets to finalize the date. Then, we insert the date before we push it out for the bids.
I'll also add that we have obviously a lot of different projects that are moving forward all at the same time. And given the availability of staff, different requests that come in, where exactly we're managing workloads, we may have to push projects depending on who's available to work on them. So, there is a chance that a project that's brought before the council for your approval for us to start that work and get going, that we may have to delay those projects depending on what else is going on that day, given the fact that we run such a lean staff. So, again, I'd ask for some grace when it comes to dates that are placed within staff reports, especially when it comes to bidding.
I appreciate that explanation because when I was reading this, I found so many wrong...
Correct.
Wrong years. I'm thinking this is about to go out to bid. And this is how it is.
No, like if you look at page 292 of the bid package, the time and date and address, it's highlighted, right? Again, once we get, once again, council approves it, we go back internally, work with our outreach for noticing, and then we finalize the date. We revise the date, then we push it out.
I appreciate that. I guess, well, two more things on this, just to make sure they're corrected. Page 292, who is Maria Enciso? She's listed as the contact for this project.
Okay, that is an error. She no longer is employed with the city.
Okay, and then the last one, page 355. It states, "The contractor shall phase the work on West Ward Avenue."
I'll just give you a second to get there. My assumption is that is an error as well because we don't have a West Ward Avenue in the city of Los Alamos.
Thank you. That was my concern as well.
Okay, can I get a motion and a second for J, please?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move on to L.
Madam Mayor, this is the, what has affectionately now become known as the AFRA replacement for the CAFRA, which essentially is the city's audited financials. As mentioned, this is the... We have brought this item back after doing a review of a typographical error and then a reference within the document itself left by the auditors that referred to another city. We since have had another auditing firm do a peer review. And any further questions with it, I'll ask our finance director, Craig, to answer.
What's a peer review? Like what source documents do they look at?
They're basically going to look at the audit itself, but they don't have any source documents because it's not a complete audit. So, they're estimating the accuracy of the figures and the verbal narrative.
If something was wonky, would they say so or...?
That's part of what they would point out.
I think it's probably also important to note that we've released the company that did the previous audit.
Thank you.
I have another question. There's a line item that it shows, I don't have the page number here, but it shows investment income with a negative figure.
Right.
Can you explain what, like, you know, I'm thinking I've got a savings account. I'm getting interest, right? You get a little bit of interest every month. How did we get negative 665,000?
Right, 665,298 dollars. This is adjustments necessary per GASP B72. It's fair market value adjustment. Basically, the portfolio investment is value is primarily related to LEAF, is adjusted to current market price expected that would, if the item was sold. Entry is done at June 30th and then reversed on the books on July 1.
What was that again? GASP what?
GASP 72. It's called fair value investment, fair value measurement.
Fair value what?
Measurement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually have a few questions. The terms, investment income and investment earnings, are those being used interchangeably throughout the agenda packet?
I believe so.
Okay. On page 546 or page 7, the, on table 1, net position for 2022, the 24,664,779 total liabilities, is that computed with the current liabilities, long-term debt, net OPEB liability, and the net pension liability?
I'm sorry, which page was that?
That's page 546.
What table is that? You said table 2?
Table 1, net position, 2022.
Okay.
So, the current liabilities, the total liabilities of the 24,664,779, is that computed based on the current liabilities, the long-term debt, the net OPEB liability, and the net pension liability? Is that how you got to the 24,664,779?
Without adding them up, I believe that's correct.
Okay, because when I actually added them up, that is inaccurate. It's actually 27,667,666. There was an understatement of the current liabilities of the $3,2887.
Okay, if I can recheck this.
Oh, were you checking it right now?
No, I was, I'll have to... Oh, you're right. Yes, sorry. Dirk and Noda pointed something out important. So, the summation of the total liability is just the non-current. Current liability stands alone by itself. So, the three items added together is 3.7 million, the 6.3, and the 14 million comprised of 24 million.
Okay, I thought that may be the case. But when I also computed the 2021 and the total liabilities was 34 million, 285,328, that included the current liabilities. And I would believe that in any financial that you would keep it consistent from '21 to '22. So, if you were computing the current liabilities for 2021, the same would go for 2022.
That should stand correct, yes.
Are there more questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you computing that right now? Because I understand that Mr. Noda had...
I think you're right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. On page 547... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, on page 645, "The city of Los Alamos changes in fund balances of governmental funds last 10 fiscal years. Based on the 10-year data trend analysis that was done from 2013 to 2022, the general direction of the annual average was about, what, 99,000 in positive revenue and even outperformed in increased revenue for a few years. And you said that there was a downswing in 2022 of roughly over 743,000, which takes into the 78,000 positive revenue that was lost in 2021 and additionally to the 665,000 that was lost in 2022. So, what was the investment that caused such a significant decline in investment earnings for the city?
It's not a decline in investment earnings. It's a statement valuation that's required because of GASP 72. At the June 30th, there was $8.5 million in LEAF. And because of the GASP requirement, that mark-to-market value is required to adjust it downward. So, there's no loss. It's just paper adjustment.
Okay. Is there a reason that it's labeled as investment earnings?
It would still be net investment earnings. That's the net. So, if we took out the adjustment for GASP 72, it would be a positive number that would have reflected the actual investment earnings.
Okay, so the interchangeable between investment income, investment earnings, and investment earnings with the parentheses, "loss," are all the same. Is that correct?
Yes.
The ACRA report had indicated that it was thoroughly reviewed by the finance staff. Who represents the finance staff?
I do.
Are there any other individuals who usually do a double check of the accuracy of the ACRA report?
I would have normally a manager on my staff that would perform that review as well.
But in this case, it was just yourself?
It was myself, and I also incorporated the assistance of my accountant as well.
Okay. In respect to the 3.40 million for the unfunded pension liability and the 500,000 for the OPEB liability, is there a reason why the funds are not held in an irrevocable trust?
Those reserves are set aside by council policy and have been in place for the last several years. So, the 3.4 million is a reserve policy for the unfunded pension and the 500,000 is for OPEB.
No, I understand that. But my question was, is there a reason why the funds aren't held in an irrevocable trust?
The trust is in place. We just have not funded it in the past for a number of reasons. One, the city was not in a financial position to do so. And putting money in the trust does not really pay down the liability.
Is the liability getting paid down as of today?
It will be starting as of July 1 when we put the first payment in place.
So, as of today, it's not?
That's correct.
So, it could have been placed in an irrevocable trust as well since it's not being paid down currently?
Well, again, the irrevocable trust does not pay down the liability. It's just a set aside for funding.
Okay, no, I understand that. But I'm just stating, if it's placed in an irrevocable trust and you said that it's not paying down the unfunded pension liability and the step that we are taking now isn't paying down the unfunded pension liability, then what would be wrong with placing it in an irrevocable trust where it wouldn't be able to use for discretionary purposes? That it could be set just for the use of paying down the unfunded pension liability and the OPEB?
Maybe that's something the council can consider in the future.
Yes, councilmember, and I think I understand the nature of your question and it really boils down to a... Since the 115 trust has been established, which was something that the Budget Standing Committee asked us to do, and now, the question becomes, as part of your goal setting, as to whether or not you wish to move that money from where it is today, which is in a reserve account, to an irrevocable trust so that it can only be used for that intended purpose. I will say this, prior to the passage of Measure Y, I believe that the council at the time had serious concerns about its ability to maintain not only its staffing, its ability to pay for public infrastructure, but also a concern that it might need that money in order to be more in a fluid position as opposed to something that was in a trust. I'm happy to say that I think that now we have gotten to that place, given the fact that we are showing surpluses in multiple years, that the consideration of moving that to a trust is something for the... that the consideration of moving that to a trust is something for the council to consider.
Got a quick question regarding that. I know this is before me, but I think it was November or October of the previous year, there was a resolution to, I think it was $260 to pay towards that. Was the, was the trust open before that?
Yes.
Or I'm just curious why, why council at that time wanted, wanted the, didn't want it to be a trust?
Well, I think the council at the time was looking for options to actually pay down the debt as opposed to just putting money away for paying it down at a later date. So the action that was taken by the Budget Standing Committee and the council at the time was to develop a plan to actually speed up the ability to pay down our unfunded liability. What they have done effectively with this first payment that actually is going to be paid with the approval of this budget in July would actually be the first payment that would go and actually start that ball rolling to actually limit the amount of years from 20 to 12, ultimately saving the city just over $2 million. Again, this is a practice that's been deployed with varying degrees of success throughout different cities. OCFA has been very successful with it to the point of being able to pay off the vast majority of their debt. I would also point out, just because I think it's, again, a feather in this council's hat, is that very few small cities have had the ability to actually earmark money in this way. I think if you look to our surrounding neighbors, and I do mean our immediate neighbors, nobody else has a plan to pay down their, their debt that has actually been adopted as a council resolution. So not only is it something that looks to have a payment that is required for the city manager to put in the budget every single year, but it also requires in the event that city council does not want to do it, they have to have a public hearing and actually declare that there is a fiscal emergency that is imminently threatening public safety or infrastructure. It's one of the few, I think, policies that are really out there that actually addresses the overall problem of paying down the pension. I do think that the 115 account is a viable tool. I think it's something that we will look to as a, something that we can use to actually pay down our annual payments that we make sometime in the future. But again, this is about liquidity and where exactly you want to put your resources.
Before we proceed on voting, so I just want to confirm. I understand from council member Hibbard on the previous discussion that there were typographical errors. However, in consideration that this is a numerical error, which actually creates an issue with the total liabilities, I believe it's prudent for the council to not approve this because it is more than just a typographical error. And this is the third instance in where there has been an error with the financial report. I'm not a licensed accountant. I just have over 20 years of experience with reconciliation and asset management. So that's why I was able to go through this very thoroughly. And I hope my council members can understand that this is more than just typographical error when in consideration of voting for this ACFA report that is inaccurate.
Nothing else?
So if it pleases the council, obviously, I want to make sure that we are, you know, buttoned up very tight when it comes to anything that has to do with math and numbers. I will ask Craig to go through this again and take a look at it again with the assistance of our auditors and see if there is any numerical issues that we have with it. But I would like to state that the underlying finding, I believe to be sound, which is that when we closed the books on 22, 23, or I'm sorry, 21, 22, that we did show a substantial surplus at the end of the day. But again, in the interest of ensuring total transparency, I would willfully pull this item.
Noted.
So, Ms. Wendy, how does that work?
So to clarify, council member Simmons, I'm sorry, city manager Simmons has pulled item 10L. We'll come back to council at a future date.
And that was the last, that was the last of those. Next is item 11, which would be our public hearing. And this is for the annual operating and capital improvement program budget adoption for fiscal year 23, 24. A staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I will have, be handing this over, the lion's share of this over to Craig to be able to run through quickly and then obviously have each one of the departments provide a presentation. Except to start, I did want to mention that obviously we've made some significant gains here with regards to where exactly we're putting money on the table and where exactly that those funds are going. I think that when we really sit down and look at some of the proposals that are being proctored tonight, that we're going to see is just another statement of how following the city's fiscal sustainability plan has really kind of set the table for where exactly the city can go in the future. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Craig.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Simmons. Please present, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portam and council members and staff. Please present the proposed budget for fiscal year 23, 24. Since March, the Budget Standing Committee has met to review, discuss and provide recommendations on the proposed budget. The draft proposed budget was presented to city council on May 15. The Budget Standing Committee reviewed the proposed budget at a special meeting on June 5. Further recommendation was made at that meeting to reduce the council's department budget by amount of $16,737, representing training and other expenditures and move those to non-departmental expenditures. These reflect respective costs that are better aligned without identifying a specific department. And future-related training costs have not yet been identified with the associated department. Again, this is a two-year budget cycle. This is the third consecutive year we have now adopted this or gone this policy. The budget reflects two fiscal years, adoption of 23, 24, and providing projections for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 24, 25. It provides a valuable planning tool for staff to anticipate future projects and operations and will assist the city to focus on short and long-term goals along with the strategic aspects of projects and operations planning to ensure alignment with the fiscal sustainability plan. It also assists in the development of future financial planning tools as well. A little bit on economic update. Obviously inflation is a big factor that's still in play with elevated levels. The U.S. Treasury is continuing to make rate adjustments to control inflation. The latest meeting of the Federal Policy Board resulted in no rate change. Basically, they're on a pause and hold. But however, they indicated two additional increases before the year end. And according to the latest estimates, there's really no recession in the immediate future. For fiscal year 23, 24, revenue projections. Note, there's been no changes since the May 15 meeting. Property taxes, sales and use taxes and Measure Y all reflect good positive growth. Here's a pictorial graph of the revenue projections for fiscal 23, 24. The total is 20, 23.2 million for all the categories. Main takeaways for the revenue projections, main revenue increases, again, come from the inflation infusion of Measure Y funds. This now is the largest single revenue source for the city at 28%. Other noted increases further improve the city's overall revenue picture. And some revenue trends are declining. Example, UUT franchise fees for reflecting the consumer change and purchase direction. Now we'll go through the department overviews next. I believe administration's up next.
So I drew the unlucky straw this year. So I'll be actually handling the administration budget this year. But just in short, this does include the city manager, the city clerk, and then also all of the work that is done by our administrative services manager, particularly focused on HR. As always, there's a number or a plethora of things that happens within administration. Obviously, the record keeping that falls within the purview of the city clerk. Employee labor relations, which falls under the purview of the administrative services manager. And then the overall management of the city, which falls under the city manager. Next slide, please. So again, goals that we are looking to continue to work upon and improve upon as we get into this next year. The first, developing that agile organization that is able to move and ebb and flow in order to meet the community's needs. The council is aware that we deploy a very lean staff here, that we actually address problems through a cadre of both consultants and then also staff in order to be able to move problems quickly through the process and finding solutions. Obviously, trying to figure out best, our best-in-class services. Like I mentioned, I do believe that, and I know Craig will talk about it a little bit later, developing different services that we can actually put out that are actually going to be bigger and better than what we have currently today. This kind of goes in line with our hands in terms of trying to develop new technologies to put in place to limit the amount of time that city, or that residents actually have to come into city hall. Ensuring that we have a responsible fiscal outlook and stewardship. As I mentioned before, I'm happy to report that this will be the fourth budget that the city council will consider. That is actually a true structurally stout budget as opposed to some of the budgets that we had before. The next, and this kind of goes to some of the questions with regards to things that we can look to do in the future, a citywide strategy in terms of things that we want to address going forward and continuing to grow our partnerships within the community. With regards to the city clerk, obviously increasing transparency, mostly this is in terms of access to information. I want to make sure that both the public at large and also city council members will be able to access information directly, which will obviously alleviate the need to go through staff. Providing these documents in clear and concise fashion so that they can look up information and then that staff can be available to provide answers to them. I will compliment the city clerk on the number of different workflows that she has actually instituted within the last eight months or so in terms of how exactly they have sped up the process for our internal processing of getting papers from one place to another. One of those is the agenda process. But again, looking at different opportunities and different technologies that are out there and how we can implement them. And then the last lead there, the streamlining of policies and guidelines. I know that all of you have heard me rail about different policies that we have in place and how exactly we might be able to allow for the city to operate more efficiently. The city clerk is working on looking at all of those policies and finding different ways for us to be able to speed up the amount of work that we're doing here at the city, given the workload that we have. Next slide, please.
So next up is finance department. What happened here? Sorry, I put it to sleep. From this slide, we can see the finance department does many things, including warrants, council payable. We administer the city's budget. We manage the over 23 different funds. Issue approximately 1,700 council payable checks in relation to warrants. We receive annual awards for financial reporting. Currently have 20, about $20 million investments in various investment pools. And then we look to do long-term forecasting. We have a long-term model in place that seeks to look out five years in the future. Some finance department goals on the horizon. Want to look at processing enhancements, namely E payroll, electronic payroll, possibly electronic dispersments as well. Also want to look at improving internal annual, manual processes, creating more efficiencies, improving customer service levels at the same time. Creating enhanced budgeting tools that will provide real-time reporting. Looking to implement or kick off the cost recovery study that was approved. This will be done following the budget adoption. Will be revising the cost allocation, internal service fund methodology and programming. And then we'll be doing some additional RFPs for banking and other services.
All right, good evening again. So I'm going to talk about the Development Services Department. So again, Development Services incorporates six divisions in the city. We have our Public Works Division. We have our Code Enforcement Division. We have our Engineering Division that handles the vast majority of our CIP projects. We have our Economic Development Division, our Planning Division and our Building and Safety Division. So this slide here talks about the recap of what Development Services has been doing this past fiscal year. I'm not going to go over every single one, but we've increased our service to the community. So one example here is up there, Public Works Service Requests. In fiscal year 22, 23, we are, have accomplished 1,000, over 1,000 service requests. In fiscal year 21, 22, we did 474. So we doubled that service request in one calendar year. Wide load permits, these are permits when their large vehicles come through the city. They have to pay a fee because they're wider than extra. In fiscal year 21, 22, we processed 27 wide load permits. In 22, 23, we did 116. Economic development, we again, you know, stepped up in terms of lost out bucks. In fiscal year 21, 22, we injected over $100,000 into the local community. That's the local businesses. And in fiscal year 22, 23, we doubled that. We injected over $200,000 in the local community. And code violations, right? Fiscal year 21, 22, we closed over 600 cases. This year, in fiscal year 22, 23, we're on pace to close over 1,100 cases. So again, our service to the community has increased during this past fiscal year. So goals of Development Services, I'm going to keep it really, really simple, right? And so before I go into there, I, you know, when we were doing this presentation, I was sitting there thinking like, how do we, you know, how do I explain this? So, you know, one of the things that I rely on and a lot of the colleagues here rely on is the city's organizational values. There are six of them. So one of the organizational values is service to the community. And that is one of the reasons why I wanted to get a job in municipal government. You know, a lot of people know my story. I am a local kid. I went to Los Alamos High School. Coming out of high school, I did not know what I wanted to do. And so I tried a myriad of things. And one of the things that I wanted to do was become a teacher. That's why I started my journey in college at Cal State Dominguez because I want to be a science teacher in biology. But one of the things that's interesting about me, fun fact, is that I tried to be a nurse, a registered nurse. And the reason why was because I wanted to help people. So I went through the nursing school and again, being a nurse is a phenomenal occupation. I applaud them. But I remember talking to my mother and I said to her that, you know, it's great, but I feel like I had a greater impact to service just one or two patients at that time when I was taking care of them. So when I got into the city here, working in the Recreation Department, I loved it because I got to impact the community as a whole, whether it was a special event. Or I remember teaching Pee-wee youth basketball in the Oak Gymnasium. And we had Pee-wee basketball, that's five to seven-year-olds, and we had two sessions of 40 kids. So every Monday and Wednesday, I taught 80 kids how to play basketball. And I thought this was a great job. So again, just like a council member or just like my colleagues here, our commitment to service to the community and a high-quality experience is a key. So again, that's our goal to continue in Development Services is to have the residents and the business owners, you know, receive the best quality of service that we possibly give them. And so again, and then I'm going to talk specifically about two of them, economic development and capital improvement projects. So again, how do we do, our goal for quality experience is we want to continue to streamline our process to report code enforcement issues, public works, service requests. A lot of people aren't aware, but we have an app called the My City, My Lost Out app that you could download on your phone and you could, again, do a service request or a code report violation. We are streamlining in our building and safety permitting, including solar. Solar is a very popular thing right now for whether it's residential or commercial. But again, it's streamlining the process. It's now all online. So you don't technically have to come into city hall to do that. So again, we're continuing, just like finances, just like the rest of the team here, whether it's the city clerk's office or the admin, human resource division or anything like that. We are trying to streamline the process for everyone involved. We're trying to improve upon our outreach, right? We have events like Good Morning Los Alamos. We're going to implement community workshops, our presence at special events, our extended social media, e-newsletters. We have message boards that we We have message boards that we purchase that we place on the street to notify people of upcoming street projects. We have door hangers, mailers, add in the local media. And again, we're just going to expand on that outreach effort. Offering services, we are now currently trying to offer services seven days a week in our Public Works and our Code Enforcement Division. So again, if something comes up in the city, whether it's a resident or whether it's internal, like a, you know, someone we mentioned hit a traffic light pole, we have people with boots on the ground in the city ready to respond seven days a week. And again, part of our quality experience is to be a risk management, be proactive in risk management. So again, in Economic Development, the goal of Economic Development is to sustain, is sustainability and continue to reconnect and strengthen relationship with property owners and businesses, right? And so we're on this journey to do Economic Development because of the fact that, as Craig mentioned in his highlight, that sales tax is probably the largest earner of funds for the city. And so again, we want to make Los Alamos an attractive place for residents and guests to come, again, that top right corner, to shop local, eat local, play local, stay local, and absolutely support local. And so we develop a lot of different programs from the Sunset Saturday to the Parklet Series, to Elevate Workshop Series, to educate small business owners on how to expand their businesses, whether it's, you know, marketing, you know, trying to give them advice on labor, et cetera. And a couple other ones that are coming up on the horizon, you can see right there in the middle is Pine Street, a grant for restaurants in Los Alamos to market their business at the upcoming Celebrate Los Alamos event. So again, part of Economic Development is, there's many, many avenues to get there. And so one of that is, and as I move on to our CIP, is we want to make sure that, again, working with all the team members here in the city from PD, we want to provide a safe place for businesses, a safe place for visitors, a safe place for residents to dine and shop and play in Los Alamos. We want to have great events and programs that our Recreation Department has offered. So again, bring in visitors, bring in residents, a high quality of life. And then also at the same time, we have to aesthetically improve our infrastructure, whether it's streets, medians, and all that. So again, we make it safe, we make it aesthetically pleasing, we provide great programs, services. Again, it entices and brings in businesses and it also, at the same time, brings in people who wants to spend money and play in Los Alamos. The last one I want to go over is our CIP projects. Again, CIP projects helps you as city leaders make impactful planning choices for the future of our city. Again, as I mentioned in one of our goals up there, you have to be proactive in risk management and capital improvement projects will, again, makes the city aesthetically better, safer, and a lot of times helps economic development initiatives. Example here is we are actively pursuing grants for our active transportation plan to make the city more bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly. And so then it's so people can safely shop and go to school in the town. So again, I highlighted up there at the top left corner, we started in FY fiscal year 2122 at approximately 2.8 million. 2223, we're going up to 4.2. And again, we're recommending, if council approves it, that the CIP budget for 2324 is 7.6. Again, it's a myriad of infrastructure changes to, again, make the city aesthetically pleasing, to make it safer, and also to provide quality amenities. You can see that one picture right there. It's a concept for one of the parks that we're hoping to accomplish, elaborate park. Again, replacing old infrastructure to a modern infrastructure for our kids and our community. And that is it.
Recreation and Community Services creates quality of life and provides many of the touchpoints of the community. And it's often a resident's first impression of the city where they experience something positive like a class or an event. I have a lot of pictures because pictures tell a thousand words. It is where thousands of residents and families interact on a daily, weekly, annual basis, especially right now during our very busy season of summer. Next slide. We offer 580 classes, a wide variety of recreation programs, including the return of our aquatics program, execute 20 annual events and serve all ages and abilities and generate $200,000 in sponsorship dollars each year. Next slide. For the very young community members, we teach them socialization, sight words, how to write their name, math and science, and how to sit on a rug attentively so they can be prepared to attend our amazing school district and other schools in our community. For our families and adults and individuals, we provide engaging, enriching activities to keep kids safe and build confidence in sports and activities. We gather adults together to meet one another, playing a sport or taking a special interest class and promote lifelong learning. Our wonderful senior population, whom we are so privileged to serve, we oftentimes provide the single social interaction that they receive each week. And they provide us their time, their wisdom, and presence to enhance not only our lives, but the lives of one another at such a critical time in their life where they may not have any family left. We connect, sorry, next slide. We connect with our residents in a variety of ways to keep them informed of all this, that their city has to offer. Next. We offer a ton of high-quality events and we bring that small-town touch that unites and connects the community together. And they create traditions and memories that at events like Spring Carnival or Chunk or Treat, you'll see generations of family there taking pictures, saying, "I was a kid and I was at Spring Carnival and I wanted to bring my family here to experience the same memories." But we couldn't do it without our partners. Next slide. Our partners like Memorial Care, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Universal Way Services, Southland Credit Union, of course, our own Los Alamos Community Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, our Los Alamos Unified School District, our Joint Forces Training Base, our local cities, neighboring cities, and Community of Rossmore, Silver Beach, and Cypress, and all of our nonprofits. As maybe some of you don't know, that Los Alamos is home to the most nonprofits per capita in Orange County, and we are very proud of that fact. Next slide. So we have big plans and goals as our team grows and continues with services for our residents, programs to expand in Los Alamos. In the fall, we will be converting one of our part-time coordinators to a full-time coordinator position to assist in carrying out some of our goals as seen here, as expanding our aquatics program, bringing in Elevate Encore Senior Expo, park pop-ups wreck on the go so we can bring the parks to the neighborhoods that don't have a park, expanding Winter Wonderland, adding an ice skating rink and more holiday decor, and celebrating La Salle and bringing all of our events like Serve La Salle, Race La Salle, the Street Fair, all together with Public Safety Fair, and as Ron said, the Streets, new event of a tasting of La Salle to our community and celebrate on that September 16th. Next slide. And as you saw our team earlier, this is an expanded version of our team as we have many of our rec leaders who are homegrown from La Salle. They attend the high school here, they grew up here, and they want to give back to their community. And we are just so proud and privileged and honored to serve.
So next will be the Police Department. And the first couple of slides are just going to break down the administration, the command staff and myself, how we oversee the department and policies and procedures. The next slide is going to break down our support services and the areas that it covers. And the first couple of slides, as you're going to see, are just the structure of the department itself as I attempt to get into the meat and potatoes of what we're going to be dealing with in the budget. And then the next slide is, of course, the operations, the backbone of the department that we see out in the field. And then the last slide, if you can stop right there. So the challenges that we're going to be facing, I want to talk about two mandates in my slides. One was given to me on the day I was hired and one that I made of the Police Department. And what I'm about to tell you, I could not have created on my own if I had tried. So we have seven people sitting in the crowd here today. One of them used to work for the Los Alamos Police Department and left for greener pastures elsewhere. And that is the meat and potatoes of what I'm here to talk to you about today. So the mandate that was given to me by the city manager when he hired me was to get our staffing up to full complement. And when I got here, I heard the number was 24. So the department I left had a gang unit with 24 people in it. So to understand the challenges of trying to staff 24 people, I couldn't comprehend those challenges. So if you're asking yourself, what would be some of those challenges that we would have to deal with, well, we have the oldest civic center and police department in the entire county. We are the, one of, if not the lowest-paid department, municipality police department in the county. And we are surrounded by departments to our south that is one of the highest paid in the county, and to our north, we've just got a significant raise. And my challenge in that staffing personnel to make this city as safe as everybody wants it to be is, we have been, have a reputation of being a revolving door of training officers to staff departments around us. So how do we stop that? And that's when we're going to get into budgetary items that may come to you in the future. And when we get cost savings that you have in the budget, I urge you, I beg you, do not reallocate that money elsewhere. Please consider what my mandate was, which was recruitment and retention of the employees that we have so that we can keep the people we have, so that you as residents in this city, when you call the Police Department, you're going to recognize the officer who comes to you and it's not a different face every two years, who has no idea what you've been doing or what the challenges are of living in this community or policing this community. So let's start with attrition. So recently, we've dealt with one captain that retired, another one that was promoted to Chief of Police in Signal Hill. We had a sergeant who unexpectedly retired. So as far as recruitments go, we were able to obtain a sergeant from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. We promoted a captain internally, and we just recently finished two promotions to the rank of corporal internally. We have recently have two recruits that we hired who made it through the academy and are about to come off training in the next couple of weeks, which will boost our numbers. We just hired Officer Lopez, put patches on him in the academy, who is putting himself through the academy and is about to graduate on June 29th, if any of you would like to join us at the graduation at the Golden West College. We had a, we will have a sergeant recruitment coming up as soon as possible. And because we have multiple positions, we will be opening that up to the outside to potentially fill those spots. And we currently are just closed a officer recruitment. And I could not have been more pleasantly surprised that when I took a list of the applicants that we have received, of the qualifications, at least on paper, we had 15 applications for a couple of spots that we're going to try to fill. And it is the best-looking batch of recruits that I have seen since I've been here. And everyone in the room admitted that they were surprised at how robust that list was, to our credit. So how are we going to retain these employees? Well, the first thing that I've done is try to initiate specialty assignments. So right before I got here, we were reinstituted on the West County SWAT team. And once I arrived, we made an application for the grant to pay for a Bearcat, which will have the newest piece of armor in all of West County that will be housed at the smallest municipality in the county. We re-implemented a school resource officer, which half of the salary is being paid by a state grant. We will have a traffic motor officer before the end of the year. And a very unique for a department of our size to be able to implement and institute a canine officer. So we have tried to expedite that process due to supply chain issues of getting a vehicle coming in. The city manager came up with the idea, we're just going to reallocate the newest Durango that we received, have it retrofitted to be able to sustain or support a canine unit. We're in the process of updating the policy and procedure and we will have that implemented as soon as possible. And we've talked about an over hire that you recently approved to allow us to go from 24 to 25. And that will be at a net cost of zero because they're going to be assigned to OCAT, the Orange County Auto Theft Task Force, which is fully funded and which will not cost us any net dollars. However, I cannot put number 25 in place until I get 24. And I'll predict the future for you. Once I get 25 in place, I will be coming back and asking for 26. And I will find ways to allocate at least for the majority of their salary, if not all of it paid for by somebody else. How else do we keep employees? Ron has done an amazing job at getting us almost, by the end of this year, barring the supply chain issues we have with vehicles, we will have an almost entirely new fleet of vehicles. Now, that may not mean much to you, but I assure you that we have a Dodge fleet and most municipalities will have Ford Explorers. So we recently had one of our neighboring agencies come to us, asking us to see our vehicles because they were so impressed with the Dodge fleet and how we have deployed the Durangos and what they're able to do with us. I mean, they're, in my opinion, they are the envy of the agencies that surround us on each side, and we were able to do that because of what Ron has been able to do with the fleet. And officers like driving cars that work. Shocking, right? Wellness program. So this is a work in progress, but we've recently contacted a meal prep company that is delivering meals to officers, sworn and unsworn, so employees of the entire PD, so that they can eat healthy regardless of the shift or day of the work that they're working. We got a state grant specifically for officer wellness, but you know, under the direction of the city manager and Chelsea, we were able to allocate those funds to do something that is actually going to help all PD employees, not just the sworn staff. And we took that money, we had it allocated towards a new set of refrigerators within the PD to be able to house the meal prep that is going to be delivered by Paleo Zone to enable us to have employee wellness, not just officer wellness. And in the near future, we'll be expanding the gym. And we're going to also offer an onsite linen service, officers do not have to take their uniforms home, and they can have that delivery done here. And that will not cost the city anything either. Other way of retaining employees, as we are dealing with the oldest police department in the county, is putting paint on the walls, simple things like paint on the walls and new furniture that we've been able to put in there to try to increase the morale of the employees. Another addition is going to be technology. We're in the process of looking at new in-car computer terminals as well as digitizing the records with our, that we have in our records division, which still has manual records on a shelf that is the same way they were doing police work in the 70s and they're still doing it that way within the PD. Expanding our photo red light system to add additional approaches within the city. And these are the things, the challenges that I face and the mandate given to me by the city manager. And then my task, my mandate of the PD was to fully embrace the concept of community engagement. And if one of our officers being recognized by, as the 2023 Attorney General's Award for Distinguished Service winner nationally, for sure the only one in the county that was recognized for embracing the concept of community engagement, I don't know what else will. And I can't thank him enough for doing that and putting us on the map to be able to be recognized in Washington DC by the Attorney General himself. In the near future, we're going to be, well, we also continue to participate in community engagement events, host events ourself. We are going to implement a VIPS program, which is Volunteer and Policing Program. We recently had the oral process for the five will be moving forward. So they're beginning, going through backgrounds, getting their uniforms. We will have a vehicle outfitted for them so that they can go in, do community VIPS patrols within the city, things that are being done by our neighboring agencies. And lastly, in that is we use an outside vendor for our, we started out with a proposal to the PD, which was then incorporated by the city, for CoPro Media to be able to supply or provide us with a service of a communications plan for the city and a social media presence for the PD, which just helps us as a force multiplier on the community engagement side. And these are some of the things that we're doing at the PD.
So back to finance. So this is a recap of the proposed spinners for fiscal 2324, at 22.7 million for all departments, including inter-fund operating transfers. The main takeaways for the spinners projections, maintenance operation increases are relative to departmental operational needs. The salaries reflect the second year of approved MOU contracts. And this includes additional proposed staffing and long-term retention strategies.
Craig, if you can.
I'll let the city manager talk about this.
Yeah, I just want to talk about this one just simply because it comes on the heels of something that the chief was talking to, which is retention. And so right now, there is a drain, I will say, just at every level of local government when it comes to managers, all the way up to department heads, and then also a fierce competition for what I'll call the real brain power inside of city halls, which is the management analysts, the clerks, the people that actually put together programs and really try to push the projects forward. try to push the projects forward. One of the things that we have done in consultation with Chelsea and looking at other cities is really trying to figure out different ways that we can actually retain our employees. As the chief mentioned, we're probably one of the leanest cities, but we're also probably one that's near the bottom when it comes to compensation, our total compensation. One of the ways that we want to address this is by eliminating the tier system that's currently in place. This was put in place at different times throughout the city's past as a cost-saving measure. The issue that it basically arises is that you can have two people that are doing the exact same job with the same amount of responsibility, that are be paid different depending on the amount, when exactly they were hired. That is not a good recipe for good morale at the end of the day. And so by collapsing all of these tiers into tier one, it puts all of our employees at each level on an equal playing field. And that's what the two side letters with, or the three side letters with the teamsters, with the non-rep, will actually accomplish today, if approved by the council. The second is a retention and performance bonus. The reason that this is important, and I'll give you an example from the police department simply because it's the easiest to illustrate, is that if we lose a police officer, we ultimately have to go back to looking at how exactly we pull one from the academy. If we choose to sponsor a cadet through the academy, it can cost us conservatively anywhere between 30 and 40 grand. That's before the person actually leaves the academy. That would also take six months to accomplish. Then, once they graduate the academy, they then have to go through a field training program, which takes another 12 months to accomplish. During that period of time, they're working with another officer. They're not out on their own, they're not, what I believe the police say is 10-8, and they're not able to, code, chief has been teaching me code. They are not actually out there being deployable by themselves. So by the time we actually get a fully fledged officer that's able to go out and ride by himself or by herself, it's an 18-month process that has cost the city $200,000. That is a lot of money, especially given the rate in which people drop out or do not pass on to the next level of their training. The retention program that we put in place is really to try to address and try to retain some of those officers at the different milestones throughout their career. We do have a program in place for officers after they reach the 10th year of service. This would extend that downward to a five-grand performance bonus when they reach the fifth year. We'd also like to extend this out to our other employees, which would also recognize milestones at 10, or 5, 10, and 15 years of, and 20 years of service. Again, a small token in order to try to retain staff that is already doing good work here, that we do want to keep here. And all of those bonuses would be available upon completion of a satisfactory review at their annual review at those milestones. And again, and Craig, please, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the collapsing of the tiers has a grand total of $139,000, which has already been factored into the budget. And then with the, with the bonus system in place, we estimate that it would be 115 for the first year of that program being enacted, and that would capture all current employees.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just to note, the bonus would be paid out of the remaining ARPA funds.
Oh, that's the best part, I'm sorry. It's actually not out of the general fund.
Yeah, it'd be also non-personable, thank you. Other cost considerations that should be noted, the funding for CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability, or also known as UAL, will begin this July 1. This is a council-approved policy put in place in November of '22. The goal is to have 100% funding of the UAL in 12 years or less. Kind of looked, already let the draft CIP program consist of a little over $7 million pending, this comes from the pending projects from '22, '23 of $2.1 million. '22, '23 would be covered from the estimated surplus of $3.7 million, and then funding for, out of special funds of $1.2 million. The proposed '23, '24 budget recap, projected revenues of $23,192,66. Proposed expenditures of $22,679,208, with a remaining estimated surplus of $512,858. And this includes the interfund transfers in and out. There's a snapshot of a long-term forecast. You can see that it projects that the city will remain healthy with surpluses going out in the year three, four, or five, and also that the projected general fund balances will increase to grow as well. So with that, I would offer up for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that very in-depth presentation. We will take, we'll open it up for public comments. And please sign in, I don't see a blue sheet for you. Thank you.
I'll take the high road earlier on a comment that was made from the consultant. That was not how it was characterized, that there were arena numbers. But what I want to do is first thank the chief for that presentation. It takes a lot to go up there and talk about the budget and things that employer retention. And I want to start off with just saying that I hear a lot about not living in Los Alamos, makes it so you can't have a voice, and the reality here is that, for me, I worked here for 23 years, okay? We share police dispatch, police respond to each other's calls, we share a school district, we contribute to Los Alamos nonprofits, and we participate in youth sports teams together, among many other things, okay? We share streets, certain projects impact different streets, different communities. But today, I want to talk about the capital improvement money that's over $3 million. I think there's other priorities that need to be done in the city. Working here for 23 years and having a pretty good understanding of the budget and the history, I'll tell you that one is, you know, prior negotiations with the city have been many years, how we don't have money, there's not a lot of trust in the city that they're going to take money and put it allocated towards employees. I'm going to tell you that, to take $3 million, when you've had employees that have been beat down for many years, I'm going to tell you that over six years. And I think there's ways to pay down the pension, because that's always been the talk of the city, is to use that money for pensions, okay? Rather than putting it in more improvement projects. I know we have, there's some money there, but putting more money towards that pension. And secondly, now, kind of like the chief talked about a little bit, he said that, you know, we need to keep officers employed here. You know, I'm very familiar, you can look at retention bonuses, those don't do anything for you. There are cities out there offering $50,000 signing bonuses, $70,000 signing bonuses. That does nothing. Okay? What does do something is making it competitive, so people come to work, especially in a small department like this, because when you're working with 24 people, two people are sick, you're coming in on a night shift if you work day shift, or whatever it is. You know, you're, you're working a lot harder when you're working for a small department than a much bigger one with less resources. So the strain that it puts on your family, and then when you, when you sit there and say, you're one of the lowest paid in the, in the state, and that we're going to take more money and we're going to put it into capital improvements, rather than taking care of the core services, which is the employees, and then it's also making sure that they're taken care of, the facilities are taken care of that they work in, and I also bring that up to the city staff too, not just the police department, but that's my experience with the, the police department. I'm going to say, we talked about recruitment, training costs, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars easy for, for people. Getting rid of the tier, that's a great thing. Getting rid of the tier system, that's great. People should be working on the same level playing field.
Give you 30 seconds, MacRae.
Okay. You know, byproduct, you lose all these employees, you have a lot of pepper employees, so when you raise their salary, the pension doesn't cost much, because it's a cost share. So now it's time for the, the city council to pay the employees a competitive, not through retention, not through non-personable. I don't like to hear that, because the idea is that people still got to plan for the future. And when we say non-personable, that's kind of a slap in the face to employees that work for the police department. We should think about what the city can actually handle, and with the money that they've had through Measure Y, they can handle it. It's time to take care of them and stop talking about non-personable, stop talking about, when you do negotiations, don't, you got to give them retro.
Okay, Fred.
The history is no retro, you extend the contract out, and then the employees are the ones to eat it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Please sign in for me.
I'll take care of that later. My name is Carol Churchill, and first I'd like to address Chief Claiborne. I really admire your advocacy for your police department. We had a police chief in Signal Hill named Mike McCrery, I hope you know him. He is absolutely astounding. He saved the city, and you remind me of him. I wanted to suggest something that I think might assist the police department. When Councilmember Hibbard asked a question about the negative investment income, or it might have been Murphy, in the amount of $665,298, the response from the finance director was that was a change in valued assets. And that would be a correct answer if this figure was on an asset schedule, but the figure is on a revenue schedule. And that means that when you total your revenues and you subtract $665,000, you are in essence underestimating your true revenue, because that number belongs on an asset schedule. I pulled something called the general fund summary for fiscal year 2023 from this budget report. It's labeled page 15, I don't know where that is in your agenda. And if you will look at account number 4620, it says investment earnings for the year 20, 2021, 2022, $114,822. I believe that is the correct figure that belongs on the revenue schedule, where the $665,000 is a negative. If you were to substitute the positive figure of $114,822, you would have $780,000 on the table for the police department. So I strongly urge you to check your finances very carefully before you approve this budget.
Any other comments? All right. I will open it up for questions from my colleagues. Are there any questions up here?
This item has a number of, of things to vote on. Is there a way that we could separate that and vote separately?
You can take the recommendations one at a time, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Okay. So is there interest in taking the items one at a time?
I am, I think I'll vote differently on, on some of them.
Okay. So Wendy, help me out here, I need.
We're talking about item 11A, the first recommendation was to review in the presentation that we just did, that's complete. We are in the process of conducting the public hearing, that's item number two. So item number three would bring us to the approval of the operating budget and capital improvement program.
Councilmember Hibbard has asked if they can be broken out and voted on individually? So I assume that's something she would get a motion and a second, and then we would either all agree or not agree?
Correct.
Okay.
Do I need, I need to make a motion?
Yep.
Like to make a motion to separate the votes for item 11.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, so now we make a motion to...
I'm sorry, I have a question. What would be the benefit to separate them?
For, for me, I think I'd vote differently on some of them.
Okay.
Versus voting the six recommendations as one vote?
That's how I'm interpreting it.
Is that what it would be, Wendy? It would be, we vote on, it would be six collectively versus individually, which is what Councilmember Hibbard is requesting?
Correct. So as listed on the agenda, it would be one vote to move all of the items. Councilmember Hibbard is requesting to take each item individually.
Is there a... No?
You know what? Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So...
So we have a motion by Councilmember Hibbard to separate each recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. So, does that move us past the question part, or are we still in questions?
It would be appropriate to ask your colleagues if they have any questions.
Okay, I'm bringing it back. Do we have any questions, colleagues?
I do. On page 687, the last paragraph, there's a reference to council adopted Resolution However, when I reviewed that resolution, it referenced the resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a new city manager employment agreement with Chester C. Simmons. Is that a typographical error? Resolution 2022-23. At the last paragraph on page 687, it says council adopted Resolution 2022-23. And then when I went ahead and reviewed and found the resolution number 2022-23, it actually was a resolution pertaining to the approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a new city manager employment agreement with Chester C. Simmons.
Could be a reference error on the, on the resolution number.
I'm sorry, could you say which, I'm sorry, which?
Page 687, the last paragraph, council adopted Resolution 2022-23.
So that should be a reference to the council adopted resolution for the PERS paydown of the unfunded actuarial liability. So I'll ask the city clerk to make a note and correction to the correct resolution.
All right. My next question was on page 750. Okay, so the Bloomfield Street Improvement Project is referenced in the amount of $300,000 for 2023 to 2024 proposed. However, when you go to page 82, it's referenced as under Measure M. From my understanding, Measure M does pertain to widening of streets. So why is Bloomfield Street Improvement Project on page 750, under the gas tax?
Trick to know, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that project actually includes funds from both sources?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, because, because on page 773, it has Bloomfield Street Improvement Project pending Measure M for $300,000. And then on page 750, it has Bloomfield Street Improvement Project, $300,000 for the gas tax. Neither one of those pages reference, indicate that there is a sharing of different funding. They actually show different altogether. One shows a gas tax, and one shows a Measure M. So are they different capital improvement projects? Or are they the one and the same, and they've been referenced inaccurately as Measure M and gas tax? And if it is, then that would mean that the special revenue fund for gas tax is inaccurate in regards to the net change to the fund balance and the ending fund balance.
If that's the case, that could be corrected, and the ending balance could be adjusted in that fund.
So that is a numerical error, is that correct?
Doesn't appear to be in 2022. Doesn't appear to be in 26. Should be 20, I think.
I'm sorry, you said it's not a numerical error?
It looks like it's a reference error. It should be, it looks like it should be in Fund 20 for Measure M.
But since it's listed under the gas tax...
20 should be 26, I believe.
But since it's listed under the gas tax, that would make the gas tax inaccurate with the total expenditures because it's including $300,000 for the proposed 23 to 24. That would also make the net change to the fund balance inaccurate. It would actually be less than the negative $523,847.
That's correct.
So that's actually a numerical error.
Right.
Shoot.
Should be coming out of a gas tax.
All right. Next. Page 752. I understand that this is a supplemental law enforcement fund, Fund 22. Were the funds that were received for the supplemental law enforcement used to offset any police activities, police-specific programs, or any public safety expenditures?
Yes, because there's a transfer to the general fund, and that's what those expenditures are for. That's a specific purpose.
Okay, can you provide a few items that were used for supplemental law enforcement-specific expenses?
I cannot recall any offhand. Do you know any, Chief?
For the supplemental law enforcement fund, okay. Yeah, if you can, because I also like to know, you know, exactly where it went because if it didn't go to police safety expenditures... The general fund, the transfer out to the general fund, which is supposed to be roughly about $140,000.
Yeah, I don't recall. I would have to dig, do some more digging to view specifically what that money was spent for.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's actually being spent for police activities. That's where my focus is. Because I understand in 2018, they used the funds for motor officer positions. So I just want to confirm that the funds are being used towards any type of police expenditures. And it's not just sitting in the general fund. The next is page 753. The AQMD. I understand that this is an air quality management district fund. So I understand the proposed 23 to 24, the ending fund balance would be $155,155. From my understanding, LED lights help reduce air pollution, making it healthier for kids and others who suffer from asthma, heart disease, and many respiratory ailments. Has anyone considered presenting the funds that are just sitting in there for the Signal Light Replacement Project?
So that's actually, it's a great question, actually. So the AQMD funds have a litany of different qualifications, or their projects have a litany of qualifications that they have to meet in order to be allocated, and then for them to be actually properly funded and then used. What we can do is we can contact AQMD and see if that is a... I'm sorry, I'm trying to see over here. We can see if that's actually a viable use for it. Typically, AQMD likes to see projects that is going to reduce vehicle mile trips. That's their main focus. But I have seen it successfully used in the past for electric vehicles, also for technology upgrades that reduce car trips to City Hall. And then also, I have seen it used for additional tech upgrades when it comes to, what is it, I'm sorry, airborne particle replacement or capture. So again, it's something that we can definitely ask the AQMD if they would consider a project like that meeting the standards.
I actually contacted them, and they do.
Well, great.
We just have to present the information to show that.
That's fantastic.
City Manager, Southern California Edison, we've been working with them for a couple of years, and they have a program where they will come in and replace all of our lights to LED lights at no cost to us.
And believe me, when we get to the point of actually having the goal set in and talking about which buildings are going to be where and how exactly we would go about upgrading everything, that will be a source that we will look to tap to ensure that we're capturing all the outside funds that we can.
Okay. On page 756, in regards to the Signal Light Replacement Project, the proposed 23 to 24 with LED. On page 756, it indicates that the LED project is going to be funded through Measure M for $50,000. However, on page 773, it references the Signal Light Replacement Project LED will be used with gas tax funding source for the $50,000.
So council, if I can make a suggestion that I think might be helpful here. The budget itself, while we do have a requirement that it has to be approved by July 1st, the opportunity to actually have the CIP list taken back and actually provide a full breakdown of where exactly all the different funds are coming from, I think might be beneficial for the council because it answers a lot of these questions. And it's incredibly difficult for staff to go back and forth between different numbers that are on multiple pages. And obviously, there's a lot of research that goes into building out a total budget as opposed to the line of detail that comes behind it. Given the fact that there's a limited number of CIP projects, we can bring those back to you at a later date that has all of those breakdowns for you. And ultimately, I don't believe that it would actually slow us down all that much in terms of the projects that we're trying to do simply because we could provide, or we could start to work on all of the RFPs and such that we will be putting out and still be ready to have them out by the time the council had time to consider the budget. I'm suggesting that just from the standpoint that, obviously, these are a lot of detailed questions, and it might be who us to get council members into City Hall to talk to staff beforehand about some of these concerns so that we can be prepared to answer the questions.
City Manager, I have a question. So we've had this budget now for a month. It didn't pass last month. Nothing's changed on it. The CIP corrections for the funding sources, will that change the CIP budget at all?
I don't foresee it changing the total budget numbers. At the end of the day, what it may offer is a cleanup of some of the underlying root accounts that things come from. But I don't see it changing the overall amounts.
I'm just concerned because last month it failed because my colleagues needed more information. And here we sit a month later, and they need more information. And at some point, we just need to start doing the business of the city.
Well, I didn't require any further information. I was actually informing everyone of the inaccuracies and numerical that I located after discussing with Craig, Ron, and Chet. So I took the time over the last month to discuss and ask the questions necessary. I took hours of my time and out of my family's time to make sure that this is accurate for the community because this is their money. And I am locating by myself these errors. And it does make a change because, like I said, I've worked in asset management for over 20 years. If there is a numerical error, that makes a big change in the balance. If there are funds that are supposed to be used by a certain funding source, and it is then used by a different funding source, there will be a numerical error. So it's not that I'm asking questions. I'm actually informing everyone of the errors that were located that should be resolved before we can proceed with approving a budget that is not correct in its comprehensive information that's being presented to everyone.
Okay. So, City Clerk, beautifully uncharted waters for me tonight. If we would like to proceed with Chet's suggestion to pull the CIP line, which I think would just be Recommendation 2, so that it would be looked at more closely to observe the discrepancies that...
Wasn't that motion denied?
Yeah. We were not cherry picking.
So again, uncharted waters for me.
No, I know.
I'm just trying to clarify, and I know Wendy has set me straight. So, City Clerk, how does that work?
As presented, the budget and CIP are a complete item. So if we were to postpone it, it would be for the entire budget and the entire CIP.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up for me. So are there additional questions from my colleagues regarding this budget as it stands?
I do, and if I fully support pulling it so that we can correct the funds and, you know, that everything makes sense as it's presented, would it be better to go over those now or bring those up later?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, was that a question for me?
Yeah. So I support pulling it to make sure that everything, you know, the financial statements are in line with all the funding sources lineup so that it's accurate as presented. I do have some additional discrepancies. Should I present those now or later?
So if I can suggest for the council, because I do believe that this is the easiest way to remedy this issue, is if a council is comfortable voting on the package as a whole, I can meet with each of the council members that have issues or have found discrepancies with Craig, and we can come back and provide a full report at the next council meeting about any alterations that we need to make at that time in order to make sure that everything is properly accounted for, that the source funds are correct, and that we ultimately are capturing or can clearly explain. Because I think that's really what the issue here is, being able to clearly explain where the different funding sources are coming for, for the CIP projects. I can, I think it just provides us a better opportunity to have all of the data in front of us if we're sitting at a computer that is hooked up to our network, that we can do some cross-referencing back and forth if the council members are amenable to that.
Okay, so let me ask you, are we pulling it?
Well, the issue with pulling it is that the city has to have an adopted budget by July 1.
Can we do a special meeting, virtual, later this week, next week?
We won't be able to do a virtual meeting at all.
Can we do an in-person meeting? If we meet at City Hall tomorrow, you know...
Well, the issue will be trying to figure out how exactly to reconcile all of your questions within 24 hours. I don't see that being something that's viable.
Like if I come to City Hall tomorrow and we sit down and sort out the funds?
Well, I think it's going to take some time. You all are going to have questions, and then we will need to go back and cross-reference where exactly those questions come from. And I do believe that a lot of this has to do with making sure that we can break down each one of the different CIP projects for you. So I don't see that being able to be done within 24 hours.
Okay, so we're going to vote on this item tonight?
I, it seems to be the pleasure of the council.
City Manager, what if we don't pass the budget tonight? What happens on July 1st, 11 days away?
That is an interesting question, actually, so...
Because we've seen it with the federal government.
Right. So I believe essentially, well, first of all, we would be in violation of our charter. So that would be problematic in and of itself. Next, I believe that without a adopted budget, and I'll ask the city attorney to chime in, I believe we continue with a continuing resolution essentially, which is a sure term that you've heard from the federal government, which essentially would keep funding at the current levels as we move forward and try to work on adopting an additional budget. The issue with doing that is that, obviously, on July 1st, a lot of numbers change. There are pay increases that go into effect. There are contracts that come due. There are any number of vendor issues that we could run into where we potentially default on those contracts.
We also have a pension payment that we're going to do to pay this off early.
And that also would be suspended until such time as we were able to move forward.
Then I'll take this opportunity to continue with, oh, if, I'd like, I have questions and comments.
Okay, we can make notes of these comments and then get back to you when we're able to answer them.
I'd like to share them in this meeting.
Oh, no, exactly, yeah. And we will take note of them and then provide the answers.
Thank you. Some of, okay, so start from the top. On page 688, the gas tax shows a total fund, a total of $1,045,000. But on page 773, this shows $795,000, difference of $250,000. Same page, 688, shows Measure M fund total for all the CIP projects is $475,000. But page 773 lists this as 725, difference of $250,000. Same page shows the general fund expenditure as $3.73 million. But on page 773, the list of capital improvement projects shows the general fund total expenditures as $3.43 million. This is a difference of $300,000. Page 688 shows a total Measure Y expenditure as a million even. But on page 773, again, the list of CIP projects, Measure Y expenditures show $1.3 million, difference of $300,000. Page 711, on, it says, under the proposed budget, under the administration section, one of the service objective reads, "Working with the city clerk and city attorney to develop a resolution and timeline for changing voting districts and planning five public hearings." Are we changing voting districts?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
There's a reference on page 711 that, quote, "Working with the city clerk and city attorney to develop a resolution and timeline for changing voting districts and planning five public hearings."
Isn't that based on the new census?
I'm sorry, I'm forwarding myself to page 711 at the moment.
In the service objectives section.
City Manager, I can address that?
Good.
It looks like the service objectives on this draft budget narrative has not been updated to the objectives that you saw in the PowerPoint slide. The, the voting districts was handled last election season. So these will need to be updated to reflect the objectives you saw in the slides.
Okay, thank you. Page 755 says, refers to the demo of Public Works, the LATV building, which I'm in full support of. But this page shows that $0 are allocated to this project. But again, on a different sheet, it says that $150,000 are being allocated, coming out of the general fund.
We'll correct that as well.
We still want to do that? Okay. Let's see. I have some questions about the generator project. Who's the most, who's the best person to ask?
I think if you ask, we can try to ferret out where exactly the question should go.
Okay. I was wondering if someone can explain to me the backup generator project and how we arrived at a whopping $650,000 for a generator?
So I'll let Dr. Noda, Mr. Noda, actually speak to this. But just to start as a way of background, providing generator or backup power for essential services buildings is a lot different than providing them for private businesses. Obviously, we run a 24-hour operation here. In the event of an emergency, we have to be able to ensure that all of our communications equipment works, not to mention the fact that we will probably be standing up a rescue shelter that also has to be able to handle the capacity to run various buildings throughout the city.
What capacity? How many amp panels are you looking at?
Again, without the specs in front of me, I wouldn't be able to answer that. But from a general standpoint, it's really about which buildings do we have the ability to power? And going through the bidding process would allow us to actually determine what exactly the ampage that we would need. I think what we're going to find when we actually go through this project is the amount of wiring that it will take in order to bring these buildings up to code and to allow for them to actually receive power in a way that doesn't bleed off a whole bunch of power in the process. These buildings were not built to sustain operations for that amount of time. And so the retrofitting that will go along with it, I think, is going to be extensive. So when you see a 600, over $600,000 allocation, the bulk of that will go, I would assume that it's going to be half and half, a part for the generator, but also for the wiring because we have to make sure that all of the critical systems within the city continue to function.
The electrical panels that are here at City Hall, what amps are those panels?
I'm not aware of the amps, um, but I do know that, uh, the amps are actually behind us here at the city council chambers. The city council chambers was built in 1962 in its original, uh, the amps, uh, the, the meters of 1962. So what, uh, city manager Simmons has expressed is, um, you know, as this building has grown over time and, um, the, um, the requirements to operate a fully blown EOC is not just power to our police department, power to our server room, power to our public works garage, so they can go out there and handle issues, and power to our, um, shelter. Um, you know, we have to upgrade our emergency generator. Our current emergency generator is over 50 years old, and it only runs at a 30K voltage. So that's why currently, right now, if the city lost power, only partial police department would be powered up. Our server room would be powered up. We would not have power to our public works garage. We will not have power to our, um, shelter, which is a community center. So we have to upgrade. Right now, we're still in the, um, plans, but it's going to be over a 200K generator. And a 200K generator, uh, again, our 30K generator is powered by propane. We cannot power a 200K generator propane. It's literally a bomb on sight if you power propane with that type of generator. So that's why we have to come in and we have to trench. So it's not just the actual equipment. It, it's, you know, again, replacement of the panels, replacement of the wiring.
Replacement of what panels? Electrical panels?
Correct.
And, but we don't know what, what amp panels we need?
I do not know off the top of my head. Um, again, we have an electrical engineer that handles that. And so when the specs, um, when we finally come up and have the specs, we can answer that question at that time.
Here, here's what I'm having a hard time with. I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to look at, look at anything to justify $650,000, for example. Um, I've worked on a few backup generator projects. Uh, at the end of last year, I worked on a project for a 10-acre property which requires more than this, this city hall facility here. It, I, it's really hard to get numbers. I, I'm not seeing how you're arriving at a $650,000 request for a simple natural gas-powered backup generator.
Again, it's not, I'll just want to clarify, it's not a natural gas, but we.
What is it going to be?
It's going to be, um, fuel, diesel fuel. It's a diesel fuel generator.
Okay.
So again, a lot of our estimate in terms of capital improvement projects, we come up with that number in a variety of ways. One of the ways specifically to the generator project is we rely on our, um, engineering company, Willdan. And so we call it an engineering estimate. So Willdan is a very large, um, engineering firm that works up and down the state of California. And so they have experience, again, working with, you know, uh, emergency generator projects in other municipality. And so that's why they can rely on their experience, plus the contingency, plus design, plus, um, other, um, you know, aspects of the job to arrive with that amount.
Where did you get the 650,000 figure from? But what calculation?
Again, relying on Willdan's experience and doing a previous project in another city, they said it's going to cost this much to do trenching, this much to do wiring, this much to procure the equipment. Then they usually add a 30%, which includes design, contingency, uh, PS and E's, plan specs.
So, so Willdan provided us with something that shows this, it's going to cost $650,000?
That is correct.
I'd love to see that, thank you. Um, on page 767, it shows that software is, uh, there's a budget of $50,000 being allocated to software. I would love to hear that this is, this includes software to process payroll. It's come to my attention that the city of Los Alamos processes payroll by hand.
This is true, and that is a project that we're looking to take on this year.
Does that $50,000 include payroll software?
I'm sorry, which 50,000 are you referring to?
Um, on page 767, it, it shows software and expenditure of $50,000?
No, that would not include it.
Is there anything in this budget that, that would allow us to purchase?
So that actual amount, I believe, is actually within the city manager's administration budget?
I saw that it was on our, uh, our, the presentation, there was a goal to, to process.
Yes.
Stop processing payroll by hand. Um, it caught my attention, so there's eight, eight days in a, in a pay period. It takes three full days to process payroll by hand, three out of eight. That's 37 and a half percent of whoever's processing payroll, whatever they're getting a year, 37 points, 37.5 of that is to process payroll by hand. So I'd really love to see some software to really alleviate the, the stresses that the finance department is in.
That is why it's a project in the budget.
Awesome.
Correct.
The, software is a project in a budget?
I'm sorry?
Payroll software is in the budget?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, is GoGov?
Yes, I believe GoGov is an ongoing cost at this point.
Part two.
Which part two are you referring to?
Uh, so right now, Public Works process there's, uh, Public Works process the, the requests through GoGov, but it's only half. So first you have the software, like the app that Mr. Noda referred to earlier, and then it's to excel spreadsheets, and then it's by hand. So there's a second module on the GoGov app that could really alleviate Public Works, uh, the time that's spent on.
Correct.
On, on processing Public Works requests.
You are correct, and that budget is embedded in the development services budget. So that's split between, um, code enforcement and, um, Public Works. So that's embedded in that, those division budgets.
Love it. Um, there is a line item on here for $250,000 for fancy trash cans. Um, I grew up in Downey, off the 710, it's known as Corruption Corridor. And whenever a city is corrupt, it always starts with the trash. This stands out to me because of my experience in Corruption Corridor. It looks like a kickback. How do we get to $250,000 for fancy trash cans that, to my understanding, nothing's wrong with the current trash cans, but these would be fancy trash cans?
Uh, Mr. Noda, before you go any further, I would imagine that a project of that size would go out to RFP and receive bids?
That is correct.
So the council will actually be able to look at all the bids that come in in order to determine whether or not there is anything wrong, much like in Corruption Corridor.
Am I understanding this correctly, that we want to spend $250,000 on fancy trash cans?
That's an engineering estimate, yes.
I believe we get bids first.
That is exactly it, Madam Mayor. All of these decisions with regards to what exactly, and I'll take it back to the generator as well, is that any amount of money that's spent at that level is ultimately going to be subject to the bid process and which is governed by, as you know, very specific rules as to how exactly bids are solicited, how they're opened, how they're processed. And those, all those decisions come back to the city council.
I've been involved in a lot of organizations and a lot of businesses in my career. Um, I'm 100 years old on the inside, and this budget has been one of the most concerning I've ever seen. I strongly urge caution.
Okay, are there any additional questions up here? Anything else that y'all wanted to add down there?
I'd like to move the item, is this?
All right, you got a second?
A second.
Is it a roll call or all in favor?
Uh, we can do roll call for this one. Um, sorry, Mayor Dobie?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Nefolda?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, last up are council announcements. At this time, council members may also report on items not specifically described on the agenda that are of interest to the community, provided no action or discussion is taken except to provide staff direction to report back or to place the item on a future agenda. Councilmember Murphy, we will start with you.
Um, okay, so I attended the 40th Infantry Deployment Ceremony, um, which was held at the Joint Forces Training Base. Did you attend as well? I didn't know if you put your hand up.
I was just acknowledging.
Um, and it was honoring the young men and women who were saying goodbye to their families and loved ones um, as they were deployed out of the US. The ceremony recognized the importance of their service and the immense sacrifice they will make for their country. Um, it was joyous, yet ominous about, you know, just what they'll be facing in the future. So that is the event that really struck my heart that I wanted to speak about because it was just great and sad at the same time. Um, I also wanted to state a few things. Um, there may be a misunderstanding or maybe not knowledge of my background. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and inform everybody about my background when it comes to finances, asset management. I've worked in asset management for over two decades, where we as a firm were entrusted to manage investment assets responsibly with financial discipline, integrity, and considerable oversight. So yes, I do have a great understanding of asset management, capital improvement projects, or CIPs, associated forecasted costs, revenue growth, creation of long-term value, as well as security and risk concerns that should always be considered and discussed. I regularly take the time to review the 300, or in this case, almost 800 pages in the city council meeting agenda packet that is prepared by city staff and then further reviewed by the city manager before it is forwarded to city council on the Thursday before the usually scheduled Monday city council meeting. However, in consideration that City Hall is closed every Friday, there isn't an opportunity to discuss any questions that may arise during my review of the agenda packet with city staff. I believe it prudent and imperative to take time to clearly and completely understand and analyze the financial process so as to make decisions that are most suitable and favorable for the community. So over the past few weeks, I have taken the opportunity to fully examine and review the proposed budget, the CIPs, amended ordinances, OPRS, the uncommitted pension, and even had meetings with city staff to fully grasp the scope and significant impact that each of these reference items will have on the hard-earned money of the community. As a council, it is our responsibility to ensure that numerical errors do not repeatedly occur in the budget. Money received by the public is utilized responsibly, effectively, and conservatively with the highest integrity, as well as take the initiative to reduce or control risk while ensuring complete oversight, transparency, and that we, as council members, adhere to regulatory standards of compliance. I am confident that the community would agree that the council should take any and all necessary steps to complete in-depth research and fully understand all the decisions we make. Review each request thoroughly, especially those that amend the city municipal code and will substantially affect the community for years. In the end, the council works for the citizens of Los Alamos and not anyone else. It is our fiduciary duty as managers of the community's finances to fully and thoroughly review, evaluate, and then decide. A proposed designs, not the actual construction, but a design that costs over $100,000 is truly necessary at this time when we only recently emerged from a fiscal crisis that almost left the city in a financial collapse. We, as a council, should provide as much oversight as possible and take a conservative approach with the use of the public's hard-earned money. Because in this capacity, I strongly believe in fiscal discipline, direct administrative and financial supervision, transparency, and accountability. I may have not been elected to this position, but I was appointed, and I take this seat very seriously. So I will not pass any kind of budget or any type of money that is inaccurate because it's not only my money that's being spent here, it is the community's money. And I think it is very irresponsible for the council to proceed with approving a budget that has numerical errors. Because anyone who has reviewed any financials will know you will not approve anything if it is inaccurate. You don't do that with any agreement. You do not do that with any kind of budget. And I have enough knowledge and understanding to know that. So with that, I am just infuriated. So I am just going to say, as Ronald Reagan said, "Trust, but verify." One should not blindly accept information, but verify its accuracy and reliability. That's it for my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hibbert?
Thank you, mayor. On Memorial Day, I was invited by Chaplain Matsumoto to participate in a Memorial Day parade at Cottonwood Church to honor our veterans. Myself, Cypress City Councilman Minikis, and Congressman Correa walked behind the American flag during the parade, then joined hundreds of veterans for a luncheon. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our veterans for their service, including our very own council member Nefolda. Thank you for your service, sir. I also toured Casa Youth Shelter for the first time and learned about their programming and the unique population they serve. I think it's beautiful that we have such a program here in Los Alamos. I attended the quarterly OC Library Board Meeting. We were joined by Supervisor Foley, so it was great to get her feedback before we passed our budget for the library as well. And just a quick update on the renovations happening at our Los Alamos Library. The library books, shelving, desks, cabinets, and furniture have been removed from the library. This happened about January, February. Several counters and walls have been removed, and the inside of the library is being completely redesigned to accommodate more modern needs, such as places to plug in phones, iPads, and laptops. Dedicated sections for kids and youth will also be incorporated into the new floor plan. It's not scheduled to reopen until early 2024, so if you're looking to borrow a book, audiobook, or DVD before then, you could visit a local library where most of those have been rehoused. I also registered to run in the fall's Race Los Al, 5K, 10K. I hope you all do too. I'm very slow, but I think it'd be fun if we could put a team together. Um, if you haven't already registered, register. I also attended the OC Sanitation District Board Meeting. We discussed capital improvement needs, and we passed our $600 million budget. Uh, also for the public, whoever's watching this, I know a lot of my neighbors loop this. Uh, tours of the OC Sanitation District are open to the public, so if you're interested in seeing how they turn sewage into clean water in 24 hours, contact me, and I will help get a tour arranged for you. And lastly, on June 6th, I celebrated the 79th anniversary of D-Day. And for me and my family, D-Day is personal. My great uncle Harold, my great uncle Harold Hibbert made the ultimate sacrifice on the beaches of Normandy, France on June 6th, 1944. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Nefolda?
Give me this quick. I've got nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Hasselbrink?
I've got nothing to report.
All right. Well, I went to a couple of mosquito and vector meetings. The information that they give us is so outstanding, and it starts, uh, next week, right? Uh, Mosquito Awareness Week, yes, that's a thing. We have since linked the information that I get at my meetings to all of our social media because, uh, although we don't get hit with West Nile virus cases, several of our neighbors are actually hotspots. So we want to keep our flawless record of not getting those mosquitoes over here with like tip and toss, and just being mindful of the minuscule amount of water that a gremlin mosquito can come alive in. I went to our city selection meeting, which is where all the mayors from all the surrounding cities and county, and the county of Orange come together to vote on open seats within our area. Um, I went to the Good Morning Los Al, and it was very well-attended. I secretly think that, uh, Emmeline told a lot of people that we were having a senior event there, and that's why they all came to the park. I went to an event at St. Isador. It was art and appetizers, saw some fantastic event. I actually asked them to come and present at our weekend of art, so some folk will be reaching out to you for that. I did take advantage of the tour of the OC sanitation plant. I took my daughter with me, and we got the secret squirrel tour. Um, it was outstanding. And it stinks when you first arrive, but once they take you into that room where real boo-boo is. Like you can see the boo-boo, you come back out, you smell nothing. I've been changed. I went to, I went to a Pine Saturday event. I really encourage everyone here, all of you here, to attend those events. It's outstanding, the small businesses that come out and the level of, um, items that they offer. I buy something every time. I love it. I don't stop by you all the time, but I do hit all like the candles and oils and all of that. I went to the Sunburst Youth Academy graduation, which is, I don't know, the second chances that are reflected in the faces of those young people is something. I mean, I could come off of council, and I would still want to go to the. come off of council and I would still want to go to that graduation. And then Ms. Emmeline and I met with representatives from the governor's office. So I have completed my circuit of meeting with the folk that helped make decisions for our glorious city, and we've hit them with some information and some requests and things that they need to bring back to us, because we're trying to hold everybody's feet to the fire so we can get everything that we've got coming to our small but mighty city. I went to a League of California Cities event and watched a presentation on a surplus land. That was fascinating. I've got Chet looking into meeting with some of the people, because it's, I understand it to a point, and then I feel like I need to get a doctorate to continue to mosey on. I think some of that's by design, though. And then lastly, I went to our Los Al High School graduation, where we had 100% graduation rate. And I don't think that's, a lot of cities can say that, but 100% of our 12th graders graduated, and I think that's absolutely beautiful. So, all right, friends, I believe that that is it and that is all, and we will adjourn our meeting in the memory of Eric Wilson, and please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. If you don't know who, he was, he's married to our Department Secretary, Veronica Wilson. And if you're interested in any of the outreach and assistance, you can hit Chief Claiborne, they've got a couple different ways to help them during this season. And we will go ahead and adjourn at 9:35. Thank you all for coming.